Welcome, everyone, to the Board of Commissioners Work Session, May 9. First, we need the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, motion passes. Budget presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we have five presentations for the Board. We have the introduction of the FY24 budget. We have consideration of the bond referendum notice of intent. We have two special events, one from Norris Brewing, one for Juneteenth Parade, and then a follow-up to the utility allocation policy amendment that was tabled from the previous meeting. Regarding the budget for fiscal year 2024, outline of the presentation, I'll review the statutory requirements associated with that, associated with the statutory requirements, but also for the general public to know what is the schedule and the process associated with reviewing and adopting a budget. And then to provide you an overview of the budget message, which is a overarching summary of what is in the budget that will be handed out to you. With that, I'll recognize Bobby Fitz to hand out the budget document to you. As he is handing that out, I'll go over some of the statutory requirements. So, the statute that covers this is in General Statutes, Chapter 159, and it has some regulatory requirements, specifically some dates. Before April 30th, each of the department heads are required to submit their budget requests and revenue estimates. Then, the Town of Zebulon, we receive those from department directors, January 31st, and they submit the capital budget by March 1st. So, there's not necessarily a budget police from the State Department, but they do have that codified in their general statutes. And then, not later than June 1st, the budget and the budget message needs to be submitted by the budget officer, in this case, that is your town manager, and we're doing that, obviously, that's tonight. And then, before the budget ordinance is adopted, there is a required public hearing that's scheduled for June 5th. And then, not later than July 1st, the Board has to adopt a budget ordinance. So, as far as those previous dates, before April 30th, not later than June 1st, those and then the hold a public hearing, there's no hard, fast rule as far as being followed up by the state, but there is an absolute hard follow-up expectation that you adopt the budget ordinance no later than July 1st. After the budget's adopted, you can make modifications to the budget, and so there are thresholds that your town manager has authority to make transfers on. Those are reported out to you on a monthly basis, and so those, when I do the manager's report, that's when I recognize Bobby Fitz for the budget transfers. Those that are beyond the threshold of the town manager, those require Board approval, and those are your budget adjustment resolutions, or BARS. Things that can change mid-year, fees can change mid-year, and an example of that, we are going to bring before you mid-year, meaning sometime after the adoption of the budget ordinance, a change to your transportation impact fee. Things that cannot change is the tax rate. Once you adopt the tax rate, that's your tax rate for the upcoming year. As far as the budget schedule and process, budget message is delivered tonight. As required by the statute, I'll go over the goals and features of the budgeted activities. I'll give a brief overview of the changes from the previous years and the programs and the appropriations for those programs. Then, you'll have a budget work session on May 17th, something to be mindful of. I've been informed by Michael Clark, our Planning Director, that you've got a Campo meeting, that's, those are in person, at 4:00 PM. So, I don't know if you need to notify Campo, or if the representative just goes to Campo and you still have the meeting, or you reschedule or revert this meeting to your work session three. So, that's just something to be in mind, that we are aware that there's a conflict with your second budget work session. Continuing all of the schedule, got a budget work session number three for May 25th. As I mentioned before, budget public hearing is scheduled for June 5th. You'll be in a position to adopt the budget ordinance after the public hearing. You can adopt it anytime, just as long as you adopt it no later than July 1st. And then, post fiscal year, after the budget's been adopted, we're going to, at your August mini-retreat, get you to review your strategic plan update, and we're going to try to accelerate your capital improvement plan process, where you update your capital improvement plan, and then you actually adopt a capital improvement plan at your October mini-retreat. As you'll see, when you look at the recommended capital budget in your binder, your parks and your Walk Zebulon or your walkability that needs some input from you all, we've handled the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, and we need to engage you all in a more strategic long-term plan of what you want to do in those specific areas. Also, adopting the capital improvement plan in advance of this cycle also just frees up some bandwidth for not only you all, but for staff as well. As far as the budget message, the goals and features, again, as with any budget, the budget is a policy document because it prioritizes the people, the programs, the projects that you are considered to be the highest need that get to the vision, which is, your goal is to have a vibrant, growing community that maintains its small-town charm and heritage. Our role, or the town's role in that, is to enhance the quality of life for our residents and deliver excellent and friendly service, and recognizing that we can't do it all, that we require coordination, collaboration with the private sector and nonprofit sector. So, those are pieces of your mission statement. As far as the focus areas to focus on to achieve that vision, is the focus areas of vibrant downtown, growing smart and small-town life, and so I will highlight in the budget message some of the more prominent projects or programs in each of those three focus areas. So, focusing first on vibrant downtown, the goals within the vibrant downtown focus area of the strategic plan is to revitalize downtown and to get people downtown, either attracting them for events or getting them more permanently downtown by having more residential and close proximity and enough density to the downtown area. Issues associated with, or hurdles with those goals is the redevelopment cost is very high. We've got a lot of buildings that have not been well-maintained over years, and so property owners or new property owners have to spend a lot of time and money going in and rehabbing those buildings. And there is no public space downtown, so we have to craft or create some of the spaces we've got. So, you've been heavily utilizing the alleys that are reserved rightaways that run through your downtown, and we've been activating those alleys, continuing on with the Phase 3. This is a rollover from the earmark of the congressional appropriations that you received last year. We'll continue on with the extension of the alleys running through town, and this is your existing alleys right here that are already activated, but continuing east and then connecting to the Catwalk or the Greenspan Greenway that connects to Five County Stadium to the east. Your Main Street program, you'll be a full-fledged member of the, you'll be a North Carolina Main Street community. We've checked all the boxes, we're getting some correspondence from the Main Street organization, so you'll be a full-fledged member of that. As you know, joining that organization, the three, four focus areas of that is to organize businesses and property owners and volunteers into a concentrated, coordinated effort to revitalize your downtown, to introduce design components such as downtown parks or alleyways, to promote events downtown, and to have economic resiliency or vitality by promoting enough types of businesses so that you can not only serve the surrounding residences, but those who may be visiting downtown. And then, special events, this budget that's before you continues the special events, most notably in the downtown area. On growing smart, the three goals are is to coordinate our land use and our transportation, meaning that you have the transportation network that supports the new land uses, that we have enough staffing as far as capacity, but we've developed the skill sets so that we have the capability to meet the needs of not only a growing town, but a diversifying town. And the third is economic development, and that means a couple of things. That means knowing what your strong suit is to attract new businesses, but understanding what you're good at and protecting that, or as we also call business retention and enhancement programs. The issues or the hurdles associated with that is we're already growing, so we've got a, quite, the network of farm-to-market roads, these two-lane hard-service roads that don't necessarily, that worked really well to transfer goods to market, but don't necessarily work well to transfer people to work from their subdivisions. We're also getting older, so as you've come to find out, we've got infrastructure buried underground. Some of those pipes, as an example, are approaching 100 years old, and as with anything that's 100 years old, it's not, doesn't function as well as it used to when it first put in. And so, you'll, we've got rollover funds for the infrastructure, but you're going to notice in this budget that we've added staff to attend to our stormwater needs. Other personnel items that you'll see in the budget that's before you is adding personnel in police and fire. So, police is adding, well, I'll get into this later, but there's two positions there. The fire is the positions that were recognized, that were needed for this year. Wake County felt as though we needed those positions this year, so they funded those three positions this year. This coming year, those three positions are on our dime, so to speak, meaning our percentage of the cost share, so that's in your budget as well. We've added an information technology position. We need someone who can think and act more strategically about our information technology needs, rather than having what we've got right now, which is a break-fix approach. The amount of users on our information technology network also require that we need an extra person just to handle the capacity as well. So, you'll see that in the budget that's presented to you. We've identified a couple of additional positions to add to attend to our stormwater system, to maintain it, to repair it. This is in direct reflection of the report from the audit from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, where we received a notice of deficiency, which is better than non-compliance, but we've got work to do. In human resources, we're piling too many duties into a single office. We've got information technology, we've got clerk duties, we even had communication duties, and so we're pulling out some of those responsibilities and giving more bandwidth to human resources by adding personnel. Information Technology Director is an example of a way to do that. Adding the town clerk, which is another position that you'll see in your budget message, is another way to achieve that. And to allow us to continue to not only help with the processing of just the workload that we've got associated with human resources, but to really expand our program. So, this is a picture of one of our wellness programs. And then, on the capital side, so that's heavy on operation on the capital side, you've got funding for the construction of the Old Bun at Shepherd School Signal. And then, finally, the final focus area on small-town life, the goals are increased walkability, which is to get people out and walking about and being able to walk in or run into their neighbors, but also increase connectedness. So, connectedness could be walkability, where you're connecting neighborhoods to each other or you're connecting neighborhoods to commercial areas. But what we really mean here, most notably, is increased connecting, is to get people engaged in their community. And there's a whole spectrum of ways where they can get engaged. They can get engaged as a volunteer, or at the very other end of the spectrum, they can run for political office. There's a couple of issues. Mind the gap, we have physical separations within our sidewalk network. You will not see anything in this budget that is a sidewalk project, which is one of the reasons why we want to have a conversation with you in September, September and October about walkability. But you will see ways to get people more engaged, and that's this, Won't You Be My Neighbor, where everyone, at the end of the day, they're here because they want to call this as a place that they call home. So, you'll see in the budget that's before you, more community engagement, so that's a picture up on the right of our Police Academy. You'll continue to see that, but we're looking to augment that by having a more fully-fleshed Citizens Academy. We've had, offered in the past, a, what we called a Local Government 101 class. It was a singular class, but this is a way to augment that, much like the Police Academy to pull in other frontline services like fire and parks and recreation, Public Works and Planning. Community Center, you'll see in the budget that we're putting money into the community center to get it more fully utilized. It's underutilized right now, it operates more as a recreation center, where it has limited hours, and the use of the facility is really for pre-programmed events. You'll see in the budget that there's more staffing, so you can get greater utilization, where this becomes more of a drop-in facility, an example being drop-in activities after school. And so, you'll see again in the budget that this is, we're funding to make the transition of this to actually become a community center than how it's operating right now, which is more a recreation center. Athletics, as with your population, the amount of people that are signing up for your athletics program is expanding, and so we need concentrated staff on athletics. Right now, we have split duties between athletics and parks maintenance, and both are suffering, our parks maintenance and our athletics program is suffering because of the growth of our athletics program, as well as the growth of our parks and the use of our parks. And so, you'll see in there a breakout of specific attention through staffing of having athletics coordinator. Little River Park continues to move forward, that's just a rollover of funds, but that's an example of small-town life of creating a physical space for people to come together. As far as the changes from the previous year, just a brief overview from the revenue side. See, that your property tax revenue has increased from last year, that's just a direct reflection of your growth. The property tax rate is being recommended to remain the same as it was last year. Your sales tax is going up. That's not necessarily a reflection of the growth of revenue or retail activity within Zebulon, that's more a reflection of the revenue and retail growth in Wake County. You get a far greater percentage from the success of Wake County, City of Raleigh, Town of Cary than you do from what you generate here, but you're in a prosperous, growing area, and so you're reaping the benefits of the sales tax. You're also growing in a, from a population standpoint, so your cut of the pie, so to speak, is growing as well, and so you can see that in the comparison of last year's revenue to this year's revenue. Restricted tax, that is a type of tax where it has to go to a specific purpose, so as an example, you have gas tax that has to go to streets. You have cost share with Wake County that has to go to fire services. So, you'll see a little bit of a bump there. That's interesting to note that you see a bump there because the cost share, as an example, that will continue to go down as you grow an annex into the county, you'll get less and less of a percent cost share from Wake County, but still, this year compared to last year, you've still got an increase. And the sales and service, that's just a reflection of services that you directly provide, we provide, even if we contract that out. So, an example of that is like sanitation and recycling service. So, you're growing, and so you have more customers, so they're paying more money, we're also paying more for services, but that's an example of the big jump there. So, those are your primary revenue streams, we could get into a lot of greater details, but those are your primary percentages, so that's why I focus on those. Those are not all of your revenues. You'll have a greater breakdown in the spreadsheet with the pie charts that's included in your budget message. On the expenditure side, real quick comparison, so last year's budget was around 18.8 million, this year it's 22.3 million, so that reflects the growth that you're seeing in those revenues, as well as the expenditures that are accompanied that, most notably driven by the personnel and the projects that I'll talk about in a little bit more detail in a couple more slides. You have paid for debt in the past by including that in your operating budget, and so that is, the operating budget and the debt service from last year has risen. That's not really an indication of an increase in debt service, you're actually paying debt down, so the debt on this building, as an example, continues to go down a little bit every year. And also, you paid off a notable debt, you retired a notable debt this year as well. The increase from last year to this year is really just a reflection of your increase in your operating costs. On the capital side, you've got some capital projects that we'll run through, particularly when you talk about your notice of intent, if you want to adopt a notice of intent for the bond referendum, but you've got some additional capital projects in there than you did last year. And then, finally, the new debt service, last year you adopted a solid waste fee, we've used that solid waste fee to finance the equipment for a lot of our vehicles that we use in solid waste. There was a band there between what I'll call the light duty and the heavy duty, there was middle-duty vehicles there that we were not funding appropriately, and so we created the solid waste fee and have used that to fund the acquisition of equipment. We've utilized the remaining capacity in this budget that's presented to you to buy the last piece of equipment for that solid waste. All right, Bobby, do you have? So, Bobby's going to hand out some details of the personnel positions that you will see in the budget. And so, these are really left for you to look at in greater detail on your own, but I'll give a cursory overview of all the positions that are recommended in the budget before you. So, first, focusing on the Police Department, and by the way, these are not all of the requested budgets. There are some positions that were not forwarded and recommended, and we'll talk about what was left off, and the pros of including some of these positions and the cons of leaving some of those positions out. So, in police, Special Operations Sergeant, right now, we've got split duties, we've got patrol divisions, but we also have special operations such as traffic control and K-9. And because they split duties, there's no one providing direct oversight over those special units. That's, those are units that really need special attention and focus, and so this is the creation of a Special Operations Sergeant to oversee those special units, again, K-9 and traffic control. We're adding a police officer, the chief asked for three additional police officers. The transition is to try to get a sergeant and three patrol officers on each shift. That's just a reflection that we're patrolling a larger area and we're tending to a lot more people. This is a step in that process, but it's ultimately not what the chief had requested. The three firefighters is just what I said before, we had planned for that to come onboard this year. Wake County paid for them to come on early last year, this is just now our time to pay for our portion of the cost share. To get at the stormwater issue that I highlighted, and that's provided with a little bit more detail in the budget message, in Public Works, we've added a crew leader and an equipment operator. To get at the athletics issue, we've split out the athletics coordinator and the parks maintenance director positions from each other, so we're taking the athletic part that currently resides with the parks maintenance director and establishing that as an independent, standalone position. To get at this greater utilization of the community center, or turn it into a community center from a recreation center, you'll see in the recommended budget, the community center, Recreation Assistant. To get at great, getting greater utilization out of our human resources, we're starting to pull some of those duties away, so you'll see in the budget, funding for a town clerk. To get at both workload and trying to be a little bit more proactive, as well as preparing for the substantial amount of work that we will undertake as you expand your extraterritorial jurisdiction, when you surpass 10,000 people, which is, I think you're at 97, maybe 9,800 people right now. We've added Planner One for the same reason, we've added a code enforcement officer, but this is also for us as a step to get a little bit more proactive, rather than being reactive on our code enforcement. As I mentioned, as a way to pull duties away from a single department and free up more bandwidth for human resources, but as well as to add some capacity to the workload associated with IT, and then, most importantly, to get us to act and think more strategically about what our future needs are related to IT, you'll see in this budget, an IT Director. And then, the last thing, and I've put in parentheses here to allow some flexibility, there's a couple of ways that communities can step into the assistant town manager position. They can step in and create an assistant to the town manager. That role is really more project oversight. Assistant town manager has more direct oversight over different internal service divisions. So, example, an assistant town manager could oversee human resources, finance, so on and so forth. I haven't quite figured out which end of the spectrum that I want to move forward with, so I went ahead and put in the funding for the full assistant town manager, knowing that we can always downscale later. But the first thing is to, is to assess where, what we need the assistant town manager to do, and so I just put in there some flexibility.
Before you continue.
Yeah.
The IT Director now, is this to replace the person that we've lost, or this is in addition?
This is in addition.
So, we're going to be filling two positions, then?
We will. If you approve this, approve the budget.
Okay.
Yep. The position that we've got right now, they're just so focused on a break-fix, and we're not having anyone that's able to focus on, okay, where do we need to be next year, two years, five years? But also, from a capacity standpoint, we've got, we've got too many users on the system for one person to do the break-fix anyway, so this is someone who can provide the strategic thinking, as well as add some capacity to those efforts. And I should have just like paused, because I'm rolling, so any other questions so far? I don't mind the interruptions, but if you have something, feel free to stop me. Okay, so, some of the greater details, as I mentioned to you, the recommended budget is different than the requested budget. So, each of the department directors, they submit all of the requests that they have, and then I will follow up with them and have the tough conversations and say something to the effect of, you can't have it all, so I got to understand what is the most pressing need and why is the most pressing need? And so, that's what I've tried to illustrate here. So, when it comes to Public Works, they requested a crew leader and equipment operator, too, part-time assistance from customer service technician, as well as clerical assistance. As far as the crew leader and equipment operator, too, what we get from that is just more attention to our stormwater issues. Yes, we have some infrastructure capital needs, but we don't have anyone minding the system. We've got over 20 miles of pipe network, we have to be maintaining and investigating 10% of that every year, and we're, and that's a condition of our permit with the state, and we're just not meeting that goal. On the part-time customer service technician, we rolled out a pilot program this past year where we took a part-time person, and for half of a year, we just gave them anyone who called with like, I need my trash can, or my wheels broke on my trash can, or anything, we were able to send this person out and not break away crews from working on bigger projects, but also to be more responsive to citizens. That has not only been successful in keeping our working crews on-site and not being pulled away, but the response that we're getting from residents is very favorable. So, this budget is to continue that part-time position from the pilot half-year to a full year. Similarly speaking, this is more internal to the office, but as far as providing clerical support, this can provide gap coverage in case someone is out. But also, our administrative assistants is getting more detailed and involved in particular projects, and we need coverage at the front desk while they are doing that work. So, the clerical assistance is a way to have a part-time person to fill in for those gaps, to attend to those customer service needs that come in, and much like the customer service technician, this would be a part-time position, but for the full year. That's what's in, and the pros associated with that. What did not make the cut is equipment operator one and a plan reviewer slash encroachment coordinator. So, equipment operator one would just be the third member of that crew, so you have a crew leader, equipment operator two, equipment operator one, and this would tend to the stormwater issues, as well as other issues that come up. One of the reasons I left it off is while that will reduce the capacity to address stormwater issues, there are vacancies in that department. I'd like to see those vacancies filled to get a better sense of what, how much capacity we really need, so that's one of the reasons I left that out. As far as a plan reviewer and encroachment coordinator, let me give a little bit of detail of what that means. So, a plan reviewer is someone who reviews all these development plans, and Public Works, we're just overwhelmed in being able to review the development plans that come in, and so we have turned that over and contracted those services out. Very expensive. Very expensive, but we've gotta have the plans reviewed, and so this is just a way to augment our public works as far as review of those plans. Encroachment coordinator is not something we can contract out. Encroachment coordinator, this is someone who looks after and makes sure that whenever we sign off on the approval with the developer on what encroachments that they are signing off, that we get everything that we have expected or everything that you have put in as a condition. If there's anything that probably keeps the public works director awake at night is that he's overwhelmed and he fears as though he's gonna miss something on the encroachment coordinator. So that's the reason for this ask. The reason that I did not include this is because I think we're gonna get some capacity because we have a town engineer, we're going to be advertising that position soon, and I feel as though when that position comes on, that will provide the capacity and the technical expertise to help out with both the plan reviewer and the encroachment. Again, we'll see this time next year. If it doesn't work, then we'll reconsider this position, but those are the reasons that those two positions were left out. Moving on to police, so what's in the special operations sergeant and the police officer? So again, as I mentioned, special operations sergeant, it provides direct oversight of those special operations. When those special operations, again, K-9, traffic control, when they work split shifts, it's possible to lose direct oversight of them, and really, for those specialized operations, you really need direct oversight and accountability. On the police officer, obviously, we're getting some additional capacity, and we're starting to round out our shifts to a sergeant plus three officers, but we're not fully getting there. That shifts over to the cons as far as the two police officers that were requested in addition. I am hearing, this is anecdotal, that the minimum staffing patrol percentages are coming down. That is, I'm not saying that that is acceptable, but at least I'd like to see what kind of an impact that one police officer makes, recognizing that we still need to have two more coming. And then there was a drug investigator right now. Much like our code enforcement, our detective division is tapped out. It's more of a responsive division rather than a proactive division. They don't have the capacity to intervene and get ahead of the curve on some things, and so by not having the drug investigator, that's less focused on intervention in drug activities, drug and gang activities. On the parks and recreation front, they asked for athletic coordinator, community center recreation assistant, and facility maintenance worker. What's in the athletic coordinator? Again, to attend to the growing athletics and field park maintenance, so to take those athletic duties away from the parks maintenance director. And now on the community center recreation assistant, again, that's to transition the recreation center to a community center, gain greater utilization of the facility we've got, intend to the needs of our growing and diversifying community. Facility maintenance worker is not in there, and so we can continue to do what we're doing right now, which is to rely on contracted maintenance. The problem with that is contracted maintenance comes by on a contracted basis, contracted schedule. And so as with any open facility like a park, you never know when someone's gonna have a party, or the restrooms get unclean, and it works out really well if, after that event, that's when the contracted maintenance comes along. But if it's off-cycle, or there's a big push, or a big event, that's one thing that you'll miss by not having a facility maintenance worker that's on staff full-time. So that's one of the cons of that position not being in the recommended budget. On planning, so if there was a prize, they win the prize, so the two positions that they asked for are both included. Planner one, that's to address the increase of the workload capacity, and you'll see greater detail of the percent increases in the workload capacity. This is also of the work that's to come. So as you surpass 10,000 people, you'll expand your extraterritorial jurisdiction, and with that requires a lot of front-end work. So the workload is to, the capacity issue is not only to address the workload we've got right now, but the workload that's coming. And code enforcement, again, that is to address workload issues, but to get us transitioning to more active or proactive code enforcement rather than always being reactive. On the administration side, I had mentioned the assistant to the, in parentheses, town manager and the IT director. The assistant to the, or the assistant town manager that could have oversight of projects if it's just an assistant two, but if it's an actual assistant town manager, they could possibly oversee internal service departments. IT director, again, to make strategic IT decisions and to add to the workload capacity of the IT specialist that we have right now. What's out is a project manager and an executive assistant. Theoretically, there's less capacity to take on special projects, branding being an example, but making the assumption that the engineer and the assistant town manager will provide some capacity. So again, this time next year, we'll evaluate whether a project manager and an executive assistant is still necessary. And let me clarify, the project manager, in this case, this is less a capital project manager, this is more like a program project manager. On the governing board, you'll see in your budget funding for a town clerk. Obviously, this frees up human resources to take those duties away from that department in addition to the fact that you've had your charter change, where the town clerk position now reports to you and compensation is determined by you, so this would be a standalone position. So your next steps, you got a budget work session number two on May 17th. As contrast to work sessions in the past, staff is not gonna bring forward presentations planned. We front-loaded all those presentations in the quarterly reports. So what we're really looking for is for you all to engage on a conversation, and what we're looking for is board feedback on goals, and so this is what that means. You have a budget in front of you, and in that budget, you will see positions, and each of you will have to make a determination, are these positions meeting your needs? Are the programs that are listed in the budget message, are they meeting your needs? And are the projects listed? And when I say the projects, I'm talking about focus on the recommended capital improvement budget, which is in section E. You're gonna wanna look at the fifth column, which says 2024 expenditures, and any place where you see money expended for that, that is a project that's identified or recommended for funding in the coming year. So take a look at the positions, programs, projects, and are they meeting what you think are the needs of the community? And if they are, then you've got a budget that you can adopt. If they're not, then you all, as a group, need to have a discussion. You need to have a discussion about, okay, I see this position, but I want this position. Or I see this position, but I want a different program. Or I don't see this project, so I'll give you examples of that. Let's say, after you've had the chance to reflect on this, you take a look at the positions, and you'll see that I've recommended some positions, but some positions got left out. So theoretically, if you feel as though we need to move forward on police officers, then we have to have a prioritization, you all have to have a prioritization discussion about, okay, if police are more important and we can't forego those two positions, then what goes instead? And that becomes a prioritization. So is it police against stormwater? Is it police against planning? So that's what we're looking for. We want you all, we need you all to give us feedback on that. When it talks about programs, this would be an ideal opportunity to ask about some of the programs that you've mentioned about, B-City being an example, joining the National League of Cities being an example. And then the projects, I think that's pretty straightforward. You'll go down through the capital improvement budget, and you'll see the projects that are identified, and you can say, well, this is on schedule, or there's projects out there that I want to be considered. So I know, by having worked with you all, that some of you will go through line item by line item, and that's okay. We will take a second set of eyes to find out if there's something missing, or if you've identified something, so we'll take that. But that's not what we need. What we really need is to see if this policy document, and it is a policy document because it prioritizes the positions, the programs, and the projects, is it in line with what you are identifying as the needs of the community? You all are out in the community, people are approaching you, you're observing things. Is this budget gonna get you where you need to be? So that's really the feedback that we're looking for. Again, if this recommended budget meets that, then you've got a budget. If it doesn't, we're not prideful. We need to hear what you're looking for, and then we can do the busy work to give you what your options are. So I'm getting ready to close out. I know this has just been presented to you, that's intentionally unveiled, so you get it at the same time the community does, but I'll take any questions or comments before we move on.
I have a comment. Before we proceed with accepting any of the requested funds from our legal team, we need to have an updated contract, so I would like to see that worked on so that we can make sure that we have one. I believe the last time it was updated was 2009, is that correct? I believe that's correct. And so we are far beyond where we need to be as far as operating outside of a contract, so I'd like to see that happen, please.
Okay, we can bring that back. Any other comments or questions? All right. If you wanna know more, if you're watching this, it's not set up yet, but the Town and Zebulon website, so we'll set up something as we did last year where you can utilize public input to provide comments, as well as we'll have hard copies at the library, the chamber, the community center, here at Town Hall, and as we've done in the past, we've distributed to civics teachers at both East Wake Academy and East Wake High School.
Can I please also request that we get a copy into the hands of Barnett Creach at Zebulon Middle School?
Any other final comments or questions? You're welcome. So, I'm sorry, Mary, did you wanna introduce the next?
Bond referendum, notice of intent.
Okay, so it will be helpful if you go to your budget binder, go to section E. And you'll want to look at the first spreadsheet within that section. It's the transportation fund. And to walk you through what could be the candidate projects for a bond referendum, recommendation from staff is that you withhold on a notice of intent for a bond referendum this coming November, but at the end of the day, that's your call. So I'm gonna walk you through the candidate projects to both give you an update on where those projects are, to clarify for you and the community the scope of those projects, but also in providing that information, give you some of the rationale on why staff is recommending hold it off on the notice of intent. So the first project that's identified that would be a candidate for bond referendum funding would be the construction of a traffic signal at Old Bun at Shepherd School Road. The budget that's been presented to you, this is being funded with the transportation impact fees that we will collect this year, that are expected to come in the coming year, as well as general fund fund balance. So you have a way to fund the construction of this project without doing a bond referendum. So that's one of our recommendations, that this is your next pressing project that requires funds, and you have alternate funding resources other than a bond referendum. So you've got another financial option. Give you a sense of where we are in the project, we're in the middle of property acquisitions. I'd probably say that we've got another two or three months in property acquisitions. After the conclusion of property acquisitions, the next steps in the project will be to initiate utility relocations. So we'll notify the utility providers to start relocating their utilities. A lot of utilities in this coordinator. We'll have Duke Energy, Raleigh Water and Sewer. Those are examples of utility providers that will have to relocate. That could be a three to six-month process, and then the other step in the process is to finalize the acquisition of all of our permits. So we're probably going to be in a position, much like we were with the signal construction at Green Pace in Arrendal, of bidding this project out at the same time of year as we did for that project for next year. So that just gives you a sense of where we are in the progress of that project. When we are ready to bid this project, we will come before you and we will assess where we are as far as our transportation impact fee collection and the amount of general fund fund balance that you'll need to award a contract on that. Let me pause to see if there's any questions or comments. Next project that's identified as a bond referendum candidate is the extension of Jones Street and the construction of a roundabout at Procter and Pierce. This is a project that was identified by you all at your October mini-retreat as one of your top five projects, and so just I'll show on the screen. The extension of Jones Street is to pick up where it stops at the church here and just continue and connect with Procter. And then the widening of Procter and the widening of Pierce, and then a roundabout at the intersection of Procter and Pierce. This is a project that we have put into your capital improvement budget to begin the design work on that. So that does not, the design work doesn't require a bond referendum. You have dedicated property tax that goes to capital, so we utilize some of those funds to start the design process. But that would be, that's another candidate for bond referendum. That would not be ready to go to construction for a couple of years, so you've got a couple of years to decide on that. Again, I'll pause to see if there's any questions or comments. The third candidate, and this was another project that was identified by you all at your October mini-retreat as a top five project, this is the roundabout at Arrendal and Gannon. We've put in there $3 million. Beginning to suspect that that's probably not enough, and I say that for a couple of reasons. You may recall Brandon Jones, the NCDOT Division Engineer that spoke to you at the East Wake Local Government Association. I had been running a rule of thumb that each roundabout costs a million bucks. He shared at that meeting that those go for about a million and a half each, so what I was thinking is that you'd have to put a roundabout here for a million, and it's so close to this signalized intersection at Poplar that you'd have to put a roundabout there as well, as well as improve the place in between. And so that's why 3 million. I think you'll get more clarity on the cost if you take more time to ascertain what is gonna be the construction costs, and you only get that by starting the design. The other reason I think that this could be a higher price cost for you is what's happening on this northeast quadrant, and I bring this up because this is a little bit of detail, but you all have expressed some interest in closing off access, and I think this illustrates a good point. Whenever you have a project that cuts off a driveway access or changes the driveway from how it used to function, for this service station, you've got an in and out here, and you've got a couple of in and out opportunities here. When you put a roundabout, at most, this would be just a one in and then an out onto Gannon. Anytime you change a property's access, so thinking about the annexation on Woodland Crossing, comment was raised about, why don't we just prohibit access to Old Bun? Whenever you restrict or prohibit access to a road, you have to pay the property owner for that impact. You are either reducing their ability to develop the property, or you're reducing the ability for them to run a business. So this would be a big impact to this business by putting a roundabout there. You would be changing their access, it would be more than compensating them for the acquisition of land, it would be changing them for the closure or the modification of them for the closure or the modification of access. Yes?
I'm assuming that we're going to have to do soil samples if we were to do that because this is a service station and there are certain OSHA requirements, and so that we're going to have to do core samples to make sure that there aren't any leaks and problems with that site. And so that, to me, is problematic on top of the fact that we would have to cut off access.
You've, you've read my notes. That was going to be the next thing that I said, that given how close we are to the, to the tanks here, we're probably going to get into those environmental concerns that you just talked about.
Do we have any other alternatives besides putting in around, pardon me, aroundabout in this location? I know that we've kind of talked about this a little bit in the past, but it just seems like this is a tremendously problematic project, and it doesn't look, or at least I've been told, that it doesn't seem like we can shift it anymore onto the eastern side of the road.
Yeah, I think for all those reasons, it's, it's more prudent to take some time to do a further design on this than this schematic that's there right now, rather than going ahead and jumping into dedicating bond referendum funds to it. I think you need the time to study the options at this intersection, to your very point.
I know that NCDOT pushes roundabouts for some crazy wackadoodle reason. They love them. But they're expensive, and I don't think this is a great, a great fit. So yeah, I would absolutely like to explore our other options, at least with this project.
Okay.
This project, though, I agree with you. I don't think it's the right spot either. But the reason we were doing this was to help with the traffic, slowing down the traffic on Arendal and the truck traffic.
Correct.
It would reduce the truck traffic.
Correct.
I believe they would go, why can't we, instead of having to do something like this, figure out a way trucks do not come through town. They can go down the four lane to 39. And I know it may be a few miles longer or something for them, but there's got to be some way that we can figure out another truck route or something.
Well, that would come with, I think, trying to take over a portion of Arendal, right?
You don't necessarily need to take over Arendal. In fact, I would strongly recommend you not do that. But there are, there are modifications you can make to Arendal that make it more restrictive for trucks to get through the area, meaning more time-consuming, meaning that they will voluntarily take a more expeditious route.
That NCDOT will approve?
Yeah, there are some things that they will not approve, but I've seen from experience, things like bulbouts that they will. The biggest thing that they do not like is the mid-block crossings. That's... I may have, I may have pushed the mute button. So I'll repeat myself. The biggest thing that NCDOT has the, the biggest angst about, so to speak, is work done at the mid-block. Things as far as curb returns, they've been more tolerant of those on their maintained roadways. The last thing I'll point out is you'll see in this schematic that you're, we're biting off quite a bit of parking from Compare Foods. Again, that will be a taking, that will be a, not just a, an acquisition of property, but that will be a taking of business. And anytime you affect a business, you pay more. You not only pay for the land, but you pay for the loss of business. So this is another example of why we think you gain more value by taking more time to study the options, even though this was a top-five priority for you. I think you might gain a lot of value by just taking time to, to study your options. And again, this is an example of that. Any other questions or comments? All right. The other thing, the other intersection that we've noted as a candidate for bond referendum funds would be the intersection improvements at Judd and Arendal. Right now, you've got a pending development application that can help augment this intersection. This intersection requires a lot of widening, which would encroach upon these properties, but there's a lot of utilities in here as well. One of the reasons you may want to hold off on using bond referendum funds is see what the development community will do for you first. See if they can make some improvements and how that reduces what your price tag would be to make improvements at that intersection. So again, recommendation is to not to do notice of intent because buying time buys you more clarity on what you need to do and how much you would, you would spend. Questions or comments on this project? And then the big project, and probably the, the biggest reason we're recommending holding off, is this is the widening of North Arendal. Couple of things to, for the, you and the community bear in mind, even though you have heard this before, just be clear with the community. We have changed the scope of this project, and we've changed the scope of this project by extending the work on the northern end, so it ties in with the development widening that's going on down here. So we've extended the project just so we're consistent on the widening. We've also made some revisions after getting some sign-off from DOT to narrow the right-of-way takings in here. There's a lot of very expensive property acquisitions. We're able to, to get some grants of exceptions from design on DOT to shrink that right-of-way. Whenever you do that, you're changing the design, so that's got to go back through DOT through, for review. So we've changed the scope of that project. Where this project stands right now, we estimate this is probably a $10 million project. Campo right now is, has guaranteed through the LAP grant that they will contribute a little less than $1 million, and that they have also said, although this is not in writing, but this is what their practice, is anything above that million, they will split the cost with us 50/50. And so given that this is, right now, a $10 million project, take around $1 million off, that's a $9 million. Our cost share on this right now would be four and a half million. So we, we projected in there that your cost share would be $6 million by the time this goes to construction, given how accelerated the construction indices and inflation in general is increasing. The big reason we are suggesting that you take some time on this is we want to have another opportunity with Campo to submit a new request. Submit a new request where we get them to contribute a larger percentage to this bigger project. Now, I don't think that they will fund a $10 million project at 80%, but even if they fund it at 60%, we're ahead of the game. So we've got some time because we're still finishing out the design, the design of the extension that I talked about and the design of the narrowing. Might be a really good opportunity to see how much DOT or Campo would contribute to this if they considered this as a new project. Speaking of DOT, we might also have an opportunity to get some additional funds through Campo. And so I think if you take the time, you might get a chance to get more funding. You also are not going to, to construction this coming fiscal year, so worst-case scenario that you don't get additional funds from Campo or DOT, and it's still $6 million. At least you know that you've tried, and, and you can do a bond referendum next year.
Can I make a statement?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, right now, when we talk about projects that Campo funds or doesn't fund, there is, it's, it's more weighted for projects that happen in larger municipalities. That just seems to be how the waiting system goes. There's been discussion, and I've been sending some emails about how do we make that different so that it is even across all municipalities, regardless of what their size is, so that we might not have to... It's easier for Morrisville to get lots of points than it is for us to get lots of points. And projects are funded dependent upon how many points you can get. And Mike, you can tell me that I'm wrong at any point because you have a much better understanding of how the point system works with Campo. So if we can take some time to talk with Campo and hopefully convince the group that we need a better system of point structure so that we have a better chance to get our projects funded, I think that that would be extremely beneficial to us, and we might be able to get stuff funded at a higher level. And in addition, I know that we've got some construction that's coming in on the Tart property, and I'm assuming that they will be responsible for some type of improvement. And so I don't know what that's going to look like, but that's going to help us a little bit when we go to move forward with that project as well. So I guess my overall statement is that it would probably actually be okay for us to hold off on this right now until we can maybe see some positive forward movement from Campo that will work in our favor. Do you have any thoughts about that, Mike? Because I don't want to say something that is clearly erroneous.
Yeah, I'll come up here before, so Lisa doesn't tell me to come up to the microphone. There are several different pots of money that are associated with Campo. The one that we probably be pursuing would be LAP funds. That is a competitive process, and Shannon or Commissioner Baxter is correct in terms of the competitive nature, that larger communities are able to put forward bigger projects, which then typically will score better because they have a higher impact. However, within expanded scope and the additional price tag, those additional factors work more into our favor than a smaller project. It's also, also, are also going to be dependent upon what other projects are being submitted by the other municipalities. Ultimately, Campo's funds come from the Federal Highway Commission, and we need to, they have particular policies that are voted on by their executive board, which is made up of representation from all of the regional communities. So in terms of LAP funding and distribution, the LAP goals are to make sure that it's equitable across all of those based on demand as opposed to based on the size of the community. There are other funding packages available to communities such as ours that are not available to Raleigh, Cary, and some of the larger municipalities, but those would be for projects different than what you're seeing here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As Commissioner Baxter noted, the other benefit you get from waiting is with the development of these parcels along this corridor, that becomes their obligation then to make that widening or to pay you money for it. And so that's another benefit you get from waiting. Again, you're not going to construction this coming year. We're not in that position. So you have time to wait. We recommend that you do wait because you get benefit in, in waiting by understanding how much you have to do and how much money you need to come up with. And I think, yeah, okay. And then the last project that's been identified as a bond referendum candidate is the widening of Old Bun Road from Shepherd School to Park Village. This is, we can't go back in time and revisit some of the developments that got approved, but there's developments alongside this section that did not have to meet the, or met the obligations of an outdated transportation plan. And so that makes it then the town's responsibility to come in and widen this section. Right now, that $2 million is really just based upon a rule of thumb that you've spent about $2 million for every mile of roadway widening. That section is right at a mile. That section would, that improvement would assume that DOT would help us with the widening of the bridge over 64, which would be very expensive. I would tell you intuitively, I don't think that's where you're going to, your most pressing need is going to next be. I think one of the things that you'll get by having expanded the requirements of your traffic impact analysis is you'll start to pull in analysis of some intersections that are further out. I intuitively feel as though your intersection at Old Bun and East Gannon is going to be the next intersection that needs improvement, rather than the widening of Old Bun from Shepherd School to Park Village. So again, I think by taking some time, getting an assessment of what is really the pressing need, I think you gain a benefit on where to put the money. Do you put it into the widening, or do you put it into the intersection improvement? Again, as, as land uses get developed, the impact on the transportation network is felt first and most acutely at intersections. So while it would be great to go back and use funds to revisit some things that, that were not put in per a up-to-date transportation plan, I think the more pressing need is going to be in an intersection, but only time will tell you that. And that's just yet another reason why we're recommending that you hold off on a notice of intent. The other reason is just to be aware of the financial capacity of your residents. So if you do move forward the transportation bond with the projects we've identified, in FY '25, you'll need to raise the tax rate .6 cents, and that's just to do the bond. That has nothing to do with you raising funds for any other operational needs or any other facilities. In '26, you'll have to raise it an additional .3.6 cents. In '27, you'll have to raise it an additional .2.3 cents. And in '28, you'll have to raise it an additional .8 cents. So you'll, you'll want to be thinking about the capacity of your residents to take on that kind of debt if you were to initiate a transportation bond. So the things to consider on a notice of intent is, do you really need to take out 20 million? We don't know. North Arendal is the prime example of it being incomplete. We don't know who the partners would be. We don't know how much money we'd have to come up with. We don't know how important some of those other projects are. So as has already been discussed, a roundabout looks neat and, and functions well at Gannon and Arendal. Is that the project to do at this time? Is the widening of Old Bun the project to do at this time? Those are some things that you might want to take the time to get further clarification on. And then the second question to take into consideration is, should you take out the 20 million? You've got some pending projects. You've got the fire station EMS construction that will come due next year. And so if you've put all your eggs into one basket, so to speak, regarding transportation, and you're already dedicated to 20 million, will you have the capacity to afford, and will your residents have the capacity to afford above and beyond that table that I just showed you, to take out the tax revenue for the construction of the fire station slash EMS facility? And you have not had a discussion on what is your obligation if you are going to obligate anything to the renovation of Five County Stadium. So those are the two bases of reason that we are recommending that you take the time, and these are things for you to consider. At the end of the day, it's, it's your decision. So that's really the discussion point of this conversation. Is the board more interested in placing a bond referendum on the November '23 ballot or the November '24 ballot? And with that, we stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments, board? Commissioner Lox?
With all the moving parts we have going on, plus the general economy, and that we may have some of this paid for by developers, I think November '24 is prudent.
Commissioner Harrison?
I agree.
Commissioner Clark?
I agree.
Commissioner Miles?
I agree. Just one quick question too as well, Joe. In what phase do we grab on to a, to a, a turn, a bond referendum attorney? Which phase do we kind of get that into the picture, just so I can get a understanding of how that comes into play?
Yeah, we would want to do it right when, right when you all are ready to adopt a notice of intent.
Okay.
Right before or right then.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Baxter?
Yeah, I'd rather push it out to '24. That'll give us an opportunity to see what we can do with Campo and see how much the development community is going to be able to contribute to get some of these projects done. Although, I would like to see us do more in small ways like we did with installing the stop signs at Shepherd School Road, just so that we have some kind of traffic calming measures in some of these areas that are of high concern. But I don't think that we should move forward with a referendum at this point.
That's what we need.
Special events?
We come before you for the board to consider two special events. And the first one is from Norris or Brewing or Longhouse, and the second one... And the first one is from Norris Brewing or Longhouse, and the second one is on Juneteenth. Before we get into the specifics of each request, just to keep the board centered on their discussion items, what they are considering is, will the board close right away? In some cases, it's streets; in some cases, it's alleys. And will the board waive fees? And the Norris application, the waiving of fees is not applicable. They don't meet the criteria, and they're not asking for it. The Juneteenth, it is a consideration. And with that, if you do decide to waive fees with that latter event, we've coupled a budget adjustment resolution that you'll have to adopt as well. So, first, on the Norris Brewing, and with that, I'll recognize our Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. I am bringing forward an application from Norris Brewing. The applicant is here. If there are additional questions that I don't have information to answer. So, the first request, so their, I'm going to step back. Their application actually submitted for two dates, September 30th and December 16th. The timeframes for both were the same, with events set up 9:30 to 11:00, and the event time from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with a breakdown of 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Both events are intended to be a local vendor market, which their business has experience doing at another location. The area requested is the L-shaped alley around north of Rendell and east Vance Street. It is the same area that the market, the town's market was held in formerly. They indicate using a very similar layout for vendor placement. They have indicated that there would be live music in addition to the vendors at one of the events. The consideration for board approval is consistent with what we've discussed in recent reviews, so that there's nonprofit status or public purpose, the applicant's substantial presence in the community, the history of positive contributions to Zebulon community, the event stimulates and encourages community support of nonprofit or civic activities, and the event's consistency with the plans, goals, and policies of the town, the potential for damage to property or harm to people, and the ability of the town to support the proposed activity, and the ability of the organization to implement the event. The specific request of the town is to close the Eastern 100 block of Rendell Avenue as identified on the map we just went through. And the discussion before the board is to whether or not to authorize the event as requested with Resolution 2023-27. Available for any questions?
Any questions, comments from the board?
I actually think this is a fantastic event proposal. I would like to see that absolutely move forward. I think that offering events that the town has chosen not to pursue, such as an artisan market, would be lovely to see that picked up and moved forward with by somebody else.
Commissioner Miles?
No questions.
Commissioner Clark?
I don't think it's a good problem with it.
Commissioner Harrison?
I agree.
Commissioner Laux?
Yeah, this is a perfect example of exactly how we want to use the alley activation without closing the street. I mean, textbook case.
What does that say? Can we make them, do we vote on it now?
Yeah, well, after we discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Motion for the resolution?
I'll make a motion that we pass, we authorize the request as presented for Resolution 2023-27.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hearing none, roll vote. Commissioner Baxter?
In favor.
Commissioner Miles?
Commissioner Clark?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Laux?
Favor.
Motion passes.
The next event application is for a parade. I've asked the police chief to join me here. Unlike other events, such as something that's segmented to an alley or to grounds, particularly parades require an extensive amount of police support. And so, I'm sure you're going to have some questions about the availability to support that event through our law enforcement. So, that's why I've asked her to join me. So, the application before you is for an event on Saturday, June 17th, from 12:30 to 3:30, as far as the setup time, including the setup time and the breakdown. Parade route has been modified from what was originally applied, so this makes this, I think, I'm putting words in the chief's mouth, so I'll ask her to correct me. While this is a more doable and safer event, it still takes an extensive amount of resources to oversee this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, that's the parade route is coming down, starting at the community center, coming down Rendell, taking a left onto Sycamore, and then down Church, and then letting the different participants, whether they be vehicles, or horses, or floats, to distribute out along Wakefield and then down Barbie. So, there will be not only traffic control and officers required along the route itself, but traffic control to allow those that are egressing from the event to move on and get back to where they started from. I won't repeat what Sheila just went, went through, but these are your conditions for event approval. They are a candidate for waiving fees. They do meet all the checkmarks. One thing to note is, while the event is open to the general public, the applicant, from what we can tell, intends to charge fees to parade entries and may raise sponsorship. So, I don't know if the candidate, I mean, the applicant is here, but, okay. But they'll be, they're available to answer any questions you may have regarding that. I don't want to speak for them on that. They have several requests to, not only to close the street, to notify impacted residents. That is a, that's an option that applicants can employ, meaning to, they can, they take on that responsibility, or they can ask you to take on the fees to notify impacted residences. They've requested that you advertise on town website. If you do approve this event, that's probably something we'll do in due course anyway, as well as message boards, just to make the community aware that this event is going on. They've requested providing insurance coverage. Staff does not recommend that you provide that, and they have asked for a waiver or reduction in fees. Expected town expense is around a little over $5,000. I think your budget adjustment resolution is $5,225, if I'm remembering correctly. So, the board discussion is, does the board authorize the event as requested? And if you wish to waive fees, we'll need that noted in the adoption of the resolution if you adopt the resolution, and that is, do you wish to waive fees completely, partially, or not waive fees? So, that's just a clarification when you are, if you do adopt the resolution. If you do waive fees, you'll also need to take a separate action and adopt the budget adjustment to transfer funds to cover the police officer fees, most notably the fees that the chief has asked to cover for outside assistance. I've done a lot of talking. Chief, can you share with them on how things are going right now as far as acquiring outside assistance and the feasibility of contracting with a civilian force to do, help with traffic control?
Yeah, so, at the end of the Christmas parade, when we debriefed the Christmas parade, I believe it was Commissioner Miles who asked about the civilian assistance for traffic control. And there are two or three companies in Raleigh who do, like, parking and traffic control assistance, so I've gotten a quote from them on what it'll cost to have their assistance. As we were assessing the manpower needs for this operation, I just asked for 10 folks. And realistically, when you get into the operational planning, I can't put 10 civilians in here. It's just not, you need sworn officers to do what I'll be asking them to do. And so, I do believe we could use five or six to help support the law enforcement staff there. This is a holiday weekend, and we're coming at our mutual aid partners very late. Typically, I would have been seeking mutual aid for this event two months ago, and so, I, I'm, I'm at their whim as to whether or not they'll be able to assist us or not. I will say that I think if we up the pay for their assistance, we may be more likely to get additional assistance. So, right now, I feel fairly confident that we would be able to get it staffed, but we would have been in a much better position had this followed the traditional application process and timeline.
I have a couple of questions. The first being, when we looked at the map, I know that the last time that we had the Juneteenth event, the horses were racing down Barbie to join the parade at the beginning, and that caused a little bit of a kerfuffle towards the end when there were still horses coming down Barbie and Wakefield. No.
Barbie, yeah.
Yeah.
At Wakefield.
Yeah, Barbie and Wakefield.
Pross and Wakefield.
Yeah, yeah. And there was, there were still, like, the beginning floats were at the end of the parade, and they were, you know, still starting. So, what would that, how would that look? Can you paint that for me? Would we have all of the horses line up at Community Park ahead of time? How are they getting there? Are we allowing the participants to ride their horses to the starting point? Or are we going to be asking them to trailer them? I need some, I need to understand this a little bit better.
Right, so, Krishonda's here too, so she can speak to it a little bit, but the vision would be that they're still doing a trail ride that day, and so, they'll be coming in off of their trail ride. It will be written into the contract that if they're not there by a certain time, they will not be allowed into the event space, and they will not participate. And that's not just for the horses, it's for every entry. Planning a parade is massive. Organizing the startup of a parade takes a lot of coordination, and it requires that folks come a good while before the parade. And a lot of times, folks can't understand, why do I have to be there an hour and a half before? That's inconvenient to my family. I had stuff to do that day. But the reality of it is, we have to shut that road down a half hour before the event takes place, and we need to get, or not we, the event planner has to ensure that all of their participants are lined up in an order and ready to go. So, you have to be there, in some cases, an hour and a half early, and that's why they're asking for startup at 12:30 in preparation for a 2 o'clock parade. So, I think between the planning efforts that the Todd family is making, contractually, what they will be obligated to, beyond, beyond the, the planning and organization in light of what happened last year with the Raleigh Christmas Parade, there's been a great deal of liability placed on organizations that host parades, and that will extend beyond the Todds to the Town of Zebulon. And so, there are going to be other mandates required of the Todd family and the organization to ensure that the participants comply with. So, things like not throwing candy, moving the parade along. People can't get on and off of the, the floats while the parade is taking place. There has to be an inspection of driver's license and registrations prior to. All of those things will fall upon the Todds, and they'll have to present to us two weeks prior to the parade evidence that they have all these things in line and ready for us when the June 17th event kicks off.
My other concern is that, having ridden horses for a substantial portion of my life, I have been around horses that have been spooked in the past, and I know last year there was a lot of horn blowing and just people being excited and happy. But the thing that kept running through my head was, I hope that none of these horses get spooked. And there were a couple that couldn't be slowed down, that had to be maneuvered off of the road and onto the grass to try and slow them down because they just wanted to keep on going. And so, when we're talking about having a parade that has a large number of these animals with all distinct personalities, I am a little bit concerned for not only the participants that are riding the horses, although I'm sure that they're, that they're equestrians and they're very well-versed in, in horsemanship, but also the people that are going to be sitting on the curb and watching the parade and seeing how things went last year, I want to make sure that they're going to be super safe and that those things are going to be addressed, and that we minimize the potential for a horse to bolt, rear, takeoff, kick. So, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't really speak to.
I'm, I'm just saying that those are, those are my concerns. And, and I know that that happens, but like horns going off and things like that.
The reality of a parade is, there are sirens, there are horns, there is music, and, and so, let Krishonda maybe speak to that.
Yes, hello. My name is Krishonda Todd, and I'm here today to represent Todd's Productions. That is the nonprofit arm for Todd's LLC. Thank you, guys, for hearing us out today. Just to give you a little bit of background, I just want to speak on the background of why we're here today. So, we were provided with an opportunity to partner with the town in planning the town's Juneteenth program, and we decided that that was not a good fit for us. So, that's why we are outside of the traditional timeframes for submitting this application. But we did get several people who requested that we have a parade. We initiated the parade, I guess it was maybe two or three years ago. We felt like it was a successful collaboration, so in order to service our town, we wanted to offer various ways for the Juneteenth holiday to be observed. So, that's why we're here. We understand that it's not good timing. We understand that there are concerns, and there are best practices to be learned from previous parades, and we're committed to ensuring that we're in compliance and also that we address those concerns, and we're learning as we're going as well. Again, we're still in the planning process of the parade, but we are excited about it. And again, we do think that it would be a great service to the community.
Thank you.
So, if you have any additional concerns, if, if it should be approved, if you have any additional concerns, we definitely, definitely will work with you since you're versed in, you know, equine, and we will make sure that we, you know, do what we can to have a, you know, a comfortable parade for all involved. We do know that there will be only a few horses that will lead the parade, and a large amount of horses will be at the end of the parade, so that may be a solution to some of your concerns. We will not have as many horses as we had last year. We are going to have a registration process and just a more vigorous training and informational session regarding the parade entry for the horses as well.
I would love for us to be able to always celebrate Juneteenth, and I want to make sure that we do it the best way for the people in the community and what's best for the town. I am going to express that I agree with the town manager and with staff that it's not right for us to take on the liability of providing insurance, and I would hope that that would not be as much of a concern for you to be able to, you know, acquire that insurance and then list the town as an additional insured.
No, we would be provide, prepared to provide our COI. No, we would be prepared to provide our COI.
Okay.
We did that last year as well.
Okay, cool.
Can you say that again? I couldn't say, you said what now?
I'm sorry.
You said what? I couldn't hear what you said.
We provided our certificate of insurance last year and we are prepared to do that again. Our main thing was that we wanted this to be a part of the official Town of Zebulon Juneteenth programs for the town. That's basically what we were saying.
Was that insurance a costly venture for you guys?
I'm sorry.
Was that insurance a costly venture for you? The average cost for that insurance for you guys?
What are you asking?
He wants to know how much it costs.
Was it expensive for you guys?
I can't speak on that specifically, but it's something, you know, of course, that we've always had. We've been operating for about 10 years, so.
And one last question. Did you guys look at, the town has a insurance also that you can inquire through us? If I'm correct, can you speak a little bit, town manager, on that? I think we talked about that a little bit. Just want to make sure, all your options that you have, just want to make sure.
There is, and Commissioner Miles and I have talked about this. There, our insurance agency through the league municipalities, the National Association has a recommended vendor that provides it online-based. It was Cover Guard, I'm not sure if that's still the one, I'd have to look. But it's just internet-based, it is costly. That typically, what I have found when I have looked into it, that typically your local insurance providers can provide you a much more cost-effective and personalized plan. So that would be, you're an established organization, so I imagine your insurance provider could help you. But if you wanted, there's plenty, or not plenty, but there are several insurance providers here in town that would provide coverage as well. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that they were aware that Cover Guard existed through the town as well. I've read both pros and cons, so something like, just an option you might want to look at. Were you looking at insurance?
Right, we would like to speak offline. Sheila, will we contact you about, talk more about that?
Yeah, when they're done today, I'll step out and speak with you.
Okay, great, that'll be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I would like for us to reduce the fees. You are going to be charging for entries, yes?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and so that will, I think if we reduce the fees but not waive them, it will allow us to have a little bit more latitude with what Chief Boykin can do as far as getting the needed support from other municipalities. Thoughts?
For me, I think waiving the fees, they're still established and they're still foundational, just as we've done with other events here recently.
Other events haven't been so expensive.
I'm still in the planting seed.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Miles, I cannot hear you.
I'm still in the planting seed motion. I'm thinking that we should waive all fees, that is me.
Commissioner Ochs?
I'm in favor of the event, but we need to kind of make sure we hold people's feet to the fire on time deadlines. And I'm strongly in favor of using as many civilians or outside agencies because if we have an emergency, your people are going to have to leave, which makes, this is only a three-hour window, but if something happens in the middle of it, your folks have to leave and we can really have a problem. And I'm totally in support of seed funding to get events started. But an event properly run should not only pay for itself, it should make money so you can get bigger and bigger each year. And I hope this is even bigger than it was last year, you know, so we build upon it. But we can't be waiving fees over and over again. I'm all in favor of seed funding, but then it has to take on its own life.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, I am in favor of the parade. I think it's a great event for the town and I enjoyed it last year. I think that waiving the fees outside of the insurance coverage, I do think that they should be responsible to provide their own insurance. But I'm in favor of waiving everything else.
Commissioner Clark?
A reduced fees, I could agree with. And they have to provide their insurance with us as additional insured.
My main concern is that even though it says expected town expense is about $5,000, if we have to go into other communities and offer more, I don't know what that's going to look like. Is that going to look like it's all of a sudden $7,500 that we are spending? I mean, do we put a cap on what we are willing to waive? And then anything above and beyond, we ask Todd LLC to take care of so that we're not caught in a position where it's $7,500 or it's $8,500? Like, I need to know what exactly we're spending so that we can do a budget adjustment. And because of the late timing and the questions surrounding, are we going to be able to have enough police? Are we going to be able to contract with a civilian company? And what that's going to look like expense-wise? I don't feel comfortable waiving 100% of the fees knowing that those fees are unknown at this point.
I want us to be very mindful of the fact that, you know, Ms. Todd mentioned and we are aware that, of their timing. Their timing that they're presenting this to us is in response to their later or their whatever wasn't able to happen before. So I think then, I want us to be sure that we're mindful that they're not intentionally coming before us late with this proposal, but because they are trying to do something that our citizens have repeatedly asked them to do in, when they were planning to maybe not do anything at all. So I just want us to keep that in mind as we continue to have that discussion about their timing for presenting this to us.
Were you not planning on doing something this year?
We were, again, given the opportunity to partner with the MLK Committee. And it was not a good fit for us. We started that in February and I think it was sometime in April when we realized that we were not going to be able to move forth with that partnership. And at that time, we were not planning on having a parade. And that's why we did not have an application already submitted within your timeframes for the parade.
Any further discussion, comment?
Nope. I make a motion to waive all fees, accept insurance, and authorize the event as requested. Resolution 2023, that's 26, Order is 2023, that's 44, as authorized.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, discussion?
I think it would be unwise for us to waive all fees, especially since we don't know how much those fees are. I don't have a problem waiving a portion of the fees, but saying that we're going to waive any expense that comes our way is not responsible and not fiscally what we should be, the direction that we should be going with any event, this event or any event.
With that, still, we would have to have a budget adjustment to come back before us.
We would recommend you keep the budget ordinance as it is. And if that money is not spent, it just rolls into your fund balance. But we, our recommendation would keep, regardless of whether you waive fees or partially waive fees, keep the budget ordinance as it is with the amount of money that's on there.
And so are we saying that it won't, if it exceeds that amount that's here, then that they will be responsible for whatever exceeds? Or are we saying that it won't exceed that amount?
Well, if you make the decision to waive fees, it waives fees. So if we go over the budget ordinance, the budget ordinance amount, we've got one of two options. We're hopeful that we've got margins within the existing budget and it gets covered, or we come back before you with another budget adjustment.
So with that said, is there somewhere you put a stipulation or a cap on it saying, okay, not to exceed 5,000 or, I mean, X amount of dollars? Or how does that work?
Correct, but that's not, that's not the motion that you put forward.
Okay, I can adjust mine. I would gladly adjust that.
Commissioner Ochs?
Yeah, a question for the applicant. What is the registration fee and how much do you expect to generate revenue from the fees?
We haven't determined the fees yet, but that would go towards Todd's Productions, our nonprofit organization.
For the nonprofit or for profit?
It's for our nonprofit organization, it would be a donation.
Were you thinking, what, like $50?
Last year, I think it may have been about $25, $50, depending on the type of entry.
Is there a, is there a cap on the number of entries?
The parade route can only hold so many before we run into the situation we had before where the front of the parade is running into the back of the parade. So it would be limited to 25 at the very, very most.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, roll vote?
Well, Mary, let me just ask, because it sounded like Commissioner Miles was considering revising his. So if he is, this would be the opportunity to revise and if the second wanted to revise that as well.
Before revise, chief, I think it sounds as if the legal aspect of policing would be the biggest change potentially in the fee. The biggest change would be the cost of police, is that what I'm correcting?
Yes.
Am I hearing you correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so with that said, with the $5,000, do you feel, in your professional capacity, that that will cover what we're looking at?
I think there's a good possibility that it could. But if we put out a request for personnel and we don't get the response that we need, I would go back at the other chiefs in the neighboring communities and raise it by $20 an hour. This is a, this is a holiday weekend and a holiday rate for us is $80 an hour. And so if I, that's not what I planned to put out. But if I were to offer $80 an hour, I think it would spark enough interest to get people to come and work for us. I hope to not have to do that.
Okay. Still, $5,000 should be comfortable?
I feel fairly confident that the, I think the final budget amendment was a little bit more than that, but.
With that said, I'm willing to amend my motion with a cap of $5,000 so we do know that total cost. And with the hopes that we will not put the nonprofit in kind of a lost status, where they would have to come out of pocket so much. So we're hoping that would assist that with that.
But they're charging fees and so, I mean, like, they are.
$25 for 25 entries, how much are they going to gain? $50 for the gain?
Well, all entries wouldn't pay.
That's what I'm saying.
It depends on the type of entry, so it would be less.
That's what I'm saying, so it's going to be less potentially. They're not going to make $5,000, as it sound like. So it's just basically, just an asset to get that nonprofit a little bit more financial gain and potentially help us. We know the work that this nonprofit does in the community. I personally see it on a regular basis. So that's why I'm willing and comfortable enough to do what I'm doing now. I know how they helped during Christmas time. They even give to Shop With A Cop, I know they donate to the police during the timeframe. December, they give tons, thousands of dollars worth of stuff. I know this, they donate to elementary school. So I'm comfortable and I see the work that they do in the community. So that's why, that's why I'm willing to do what I'm doing now.
I'm not disagreeing with any of that.
Right.
The Todds do a lot to enhance community in our town. My concern is just that we put a cap on the amount so that we're not staring down the barrel of some crazy unknown number that we haven't budgeted for.
Do we need to rescind the second also? On the original motion?
We have to change it because I'm still seeking the professional capacity from the chief here. So it's her expertise. I haven't changed my motion yet, sir. No, sir, I didn't. I just wanted, before I move forward, I just wanted to make sure that she felt comfortable enough with the $5,000 cap, sir.
Fairly confident.
Okay, sounds good. With that said, I'm willing to amend my motion there to the $5,000 cap and waiving all fees except for insurance. And Resolution 2023, that's 26, and Order is 2023, that's 44.
Could we have you state it so that we are waiving fees up to $5,000?
That's perfect. We're waiving all fees up to $5,000 with that cap. Which is that cap, $5,000, is it saying, just saying, okay?
I, thank you. It was, the way I heard it was limiting me to $5,000. So I think that's a little clearer.
Okay.
That it's, fees waived up to $5,000.
So if it goes over, if it's $5,100, then the Todds may have to contribute $100.
I would like to know your thoughts on that.
The extras.
I'm able to ask a question. And when would we know if those fees were to exceed $5,000? Because we are not, you know.
I think within the next two weeks, I will have a lineup of personnel who I expect to be there.
With that said, you feel comfortable, I mean, as a nonprofit, do you feel comfortable moving forward with that, like that, at that $5,000 end? I just want to make sure I set you up where you're successful, not having, where you're kind of going in to hold, to hold something for the town as its citizens.
Right, we're not trying to take on any financial obligation in regards to those fees. So if the chief says that she's comfortable that it would not exceed 5,000.
Okay.
Fairly. I'm not committing to that. I feel fairly confident. I'm, quick math, if I had to pay 19 officers for three hours, $80 an hour, it's almost $5,500. Some of those are town employees, which means there's benefits on top of that. So there's a couple, I don't know, another $1,000 there. And then the expenses associated with public work. So very quick math, it could go up to $6,500. I don't think that it will. But that's the reality of where we could end up.
We have a revised motion, do we have a second?
Second. Yeah, what I was going to say is that since Commissioner Harrison was the second, she would have to agree to the amendment. And I want to make sure I understand the amendment. Is that you want to amend your motion to waive up to $5,000 and the cost of insurance? That they would, or no, excuse me, that they would be responsible for the cost of insurance?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
They're comfortable with that, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison? Your second.
Second the amended motion?
There you go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Discussion?
Next year, I'd like to see it pay for itself with maybe additional vendors added, et cetera. Because I think it, we can make it bigger and it can carry its own weight.
I believe that too, but what I, but the reason why, I'll explain to you for right now is that I know the work that they do in the community, the volumes that they give out. They've given thousands of dollars to this community in just, like I said, Christmas time, year-round. That's to our police staff, they give it year-round, I know this for sure. So that's why I feel comfortable with that amount.
One of the concerns is starting this process a little earlier. So it won't be like a last minute trying to squeeze in stuff. So hopefully, hopefully next year, we can accomplish that.
Well, and I'll share my opinion. My biggest concern is resources. We have two events going on on June 17th. One here, that's going to be an all-day event that will require law enforcement presence. And now we have another event downtown, which pulls us in two directions and is going to tap our resources. I know that there was great effort to get together and do something together. And we will make this work the very best way that we can. But there needs to be a more concerted effort at doing an event that meets everybody's needs and takes into consideration the impact on the staff. We will not have Parks and Rec staff supporting this parade. They are going to be completely and totally responsible for all of the planning and setup. And our staff is going to be here because we're putting on a big event here. So that's my biggest concern.
Yes.
And we did that last year. It was organized by our event coordinator last year for Todd's Productions. And we didn't get any negative feedback other than what the chief provided in terms of her suggested route change and the egress plan, which we adopted.
Correctly from wrong, you guys have your own marketing person, marketing with a twist, correct? The young lady? You guys have your own marketing person, correct? That handles that for you guys?
She's involved, yes. She'll be involved.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I do think that going forward, we cannot be entering into discussions in May for a parade that's going to happen in June. It just, I don't want to do this, I don't want to do this. It is too taxing on our staff. It is too taxing on our staff. It is too stressful for everyone that is going to try and make this happen. So I don't care if it's Juneteenth or what the event is. We can't be trying to coordinate a parade without more time. And we're doing this this year, I hope, because we understand how important celebrating Juneteenth is. But if this happens again, I'm not going to be in favor of it, because I know the toll that it's taking on our staff.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, are we ready for roll vote? Commissioner Laux?
In favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Baxter? I mean, Commissioner Clark?
It does every time. Favor.
Commissioner Baxter?
Favor.
Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Motion passed. Hearing that, before the next presentation, a 10-minute recess.
Wow, that's big, I'm proud. So the election took place afterwards?
No, so they sent out something, because there were a lot of district seats that were empty.
I'm proud of you. I'm proud of you. Very proud of you. Congratulations.
When they start digging to install like all the utilities, there'll be, there'll be a lot of dirt moving off there. And it's amazing, the company that they hired to do the site clearing and the initial site prep, they're like surgeons removing those trees.
Uh, Pandora just always just randomly starts playing. I know, right? It is, for all of us. But we are on vacation, starting tomorrow. Tomorrow, we'll be there until Sunday night.
I'm good to go.
All right, thank you.
Nice.
It's going to be like 95 degrees, but...
If my daughter went to Yellowstone, and her husband and the baby, it snowed them with the front door, they couldn't get out.
Oh my goodness, I saw the picture.
You see the picture of the baby sitting in the snow? Or laying in the snow, he doesn't see it yet. He's not old enough.
First, they ended up getting a couple of feet of snow back in my hometown.
Well, it was snowing up there in wherever they were, some kind of island, Idaho, right there.
If you live in Michigan, you're not surprised.
Oh wow, that's big.
It happens.
Yeah, I called my dad, and I'm like, yeah, it's like 75, it's sunny down here. It's cold, and he's like, shut up.
What inches did they get?
So you said 5:30, sir?
In Escanaba, they ended up getting...
Yeah, the tarred property would be fun to watch them clear that out. I hate to see all those trees in the...
In Nogoni, they ended up getting 14.
First at 5:30.
It was that wet snow.
June what? June 8th, Old Raleigh, 5:30.
Plans collapsed.
They're going to do the ribbon cutting.
Same thing with...
7:30.
In Borpen Peninsula, area around Cadillac, they ended up getting five or six inches, and by the end of the next day, all that was left was a snowman that everybody built.
So they were just a distribution center. Yeah. Somehow, somebody worked at Devil Dog.
I'm talking mushrooms.
That's amazing. People that amaze, guys.
Yeah, I've had this little stuff for five years.
That's a long time.
Well, that ought to be right. I mean, I wore my clothes, and I'm sure you're, it was 70.
Grand Traverse Bay area.
And I bought my clothes from Devil Dog.
Lelandoff Peninsula.
She's coming, she'll be here just one moment.
Okay. That's right, she's getting into the hockey time now. Hurricanes, New Jersey.
Bang, Sheila.
Get down!
Three things you saw on the Parks and Rec budget, yes, funded.
Come on!
We told her to come in with a bang.
She did.
Reconvene?
Utility allocation policy.
Here, the board tabled the discussion on this item, the utility allocation policy, till this meeting. And with that, I'll recognize Michael Clark, Planning Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. As you may recall at the last meeting, we discussed several amendments to the utility allocation policy. There wasn't a real clear consensus, so rightfully so, there was the motion made to table it to this meeting for discussion. As part of that, kind of as precursor, once again, I want to remind you what the utility allocation policy is. It's an opportunity or a tool to leverage the water and sewer allocation that the town owns to obtain high-quality development and incentivize desired uses, amenities, and features. This is just one of many tools in the toolbox, in addition to the UDO, the Comprehensible Use Plan, the Transportation Plan, Parks and Recreation Plan, as well as the impact fees that are collected for the transportation, as well as Parks and Recreation, that last one specifically for residential uses. The proposed changes, really based upon those five elements, were modified the point structures, created new base point options, which we talked a little bit about last time, changed the category maximums, so they're not in the general category, but each of those subcategories, to really allow for folks to fully maximize particular categories while still not being able to get all of their points necessarily for larger developments from just one classification. We add additional subcategories, such as affordable housing, and those in a couple other elements, as well as new bonus point options. Before we go further, I really want to iterate that part of this, it's a balance. We want to make sure that we create regulations where we're obtaining what we're desiring, much like, mentioned me here, Mitch Silver, or Mitchell Silver commented about, let's be a plan-making community versus deal-making community. And this is an incentive, an opportunity to be that plan-making community by really incentivizing things. However, we do not want to make it overly strict and cost prohibitive for development to occur here within Zebulon, especially in the realm of commercial developments. As was discussed tonight, one of the reasons for not moving forward with the transportation bond was the possibility that there's going to be commercial developments along North Arrendal. In addition to those right-of-way improvements from centerline to proper line that they would have to construct, there's also water and sewer improvements, site improvements in relation to the unified development ordinance, as well as dealing with increased construction costs, increased labor costs. So while we're discussing these, make sure you also keep in mind that balance emphasis that we wanted to make sure that we're achieving, where we're not making overly regulatory and cost prohibitive for commercial developments to occur. But before we move forward, I brought in Senior Planner Adam Callpepper, along with our Planner One, Kate Farrell. Kate and Adam really looked at what we currently have in review and how these points could or could not be applicable. They went, met with several of the developments, and as you heard me mention last time, we have several developments that are unable to meet... we have several developments that are unable to meet the policies as currently draft or as currently approved. So I'm going to turn it over to Adam to talk a little bit about how the point structure came about and specifically a couple scenarios, some generalized scenarios, as well as a couple specific situations on how the points are not able to be achieved.
Good evening. So looking at the things that are in front of you, the first is a, it's kind of a comparison between the current utility allocation policy and the proposed amendments. It's that eight and a half by eleven packet that you have. The second packet that you have is the stack of eleven by seventeens that are of a couple different plans. The first two plans that are actually in that, that set are just dealing with single-use retail, one of them being the proposed cookout that is at Arrendal and Dogwood, and the other being a convenience store just across the street of Dogwood from that cookout that's being proposed. Both of those developers have expressed to me their concerns with the policy and then not being able to achieve it. And I felt like that was a, a good opportunity for me to kind of show why we made these changes. Single-use retail previously used to be a twenty-point base point classification. The reason that I moved it to forty, you'll be able to kind of walk through as we're going through this.
Where are you at now?
If you're looking at the eight and a half by eleven, the front page of that, that's just dealing with the single-use retail from the current and the proposed. So you'll see it's a twenty-point base in the current utility allocation policy. I'd move that to forty. And we'll kind of go through why I did that. We, we weren't able to achieve based off of what these developers were providing and able to provide. I went to a little bit of, I, I used a little bit of leeway and added things on to the current utility allocation policy that they hadn't shown on the plans, like EV charging stations, enhanced roadside buffer, displaying public art, installing native shade trees. Those are things that are currently in our utility allocation policy, which got them a total of about forty points, and they were saying that they had something they were willing to be able to get to and things that they were able to provide. So if we go from that to the proposed utility allocation policy, looking specifically at these single-use retail, the additional classifica, or additional categories and things that we've added, including artisan-designed bike racks, smart waste and recycling facilities, bike stands with tools and things like that, along with the increase of the base points has allowed that type of site to achieve sixty points. And you can kind of see all the things that they would still be providing and the things that they would be providing on top of what our current ordinance requires.
So you'd be taking away the sections on the left-hand side?
The left-hand.
And replacing them with what is on the right-hand side?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a comparison. The, the left-hand side is our, our current, you see how some of the things like enhanced roadside buffer and everything like that, and in the outdoor enhancements, all that stuff has been brought over to what, because we still have that in the utility allocation policy. There's additional things like their buy-retention stormwater, which is, you know, we, that, that are also being carried over, but the artisan-designed bike racks are an additional amenity that they could add to, to add some features to that, or, or a public work bike stand that gives them additional classification points. So it's a, it's a little bit of additional things that they're able to add to the site that aren't a, a, a huge cost and a huge portion of the property being taken up. Because a lot of these are on smaller sites, they don't have a lot of area to go and actually add additional things that are in our current policy, considering it's geared mostly to residential development and not as much to this single-use retail. So I just kind of, that's how the, the point classification went from twenty to forty for that base point. I wanted to kind of provide those examples. In dealing with that, you can kind of, you can see how on these site plans, there's not a lot of space for them. If you look at the cookout site plan, the area that's to the back of the property, although it's blank, this is a landscape plan, that area is eighty percent a stormwater pond right now. So there's not additional area for them to add, even a pocket park or something along those lines that, that might be a possibility. So they're, they're pretty crunched on where they can actually add things and what things they could add to the site to meet the current policy. Does anyone have any questions? I know I'm talking a lot about, about single-use retail and the reason I went from twenty points to forty points in some of the additional categories. Or any concerns?
So my concern is that I don't want, while I want businesses and I want developments to come here, I want them to be the right type, and I want them to care about our community, and I want them to make a significant investment in order to be here. I don't want to feel like we are moving the bar so that anyone can be here. And I think going from twenty to forty is aggressive. Is there a way that they don't have room on their, their plot of land to put in a pocket park, but that is something that they would like to do? A pocket park comes with an associated ballpark figure of what it would cost. Can that somehow be put toward, like, they can pay for a pocket park, but put it in parks and wrecks, you know, for them to make a pocket park at some point in the future?
So doing an off-site improvement?
Yes.
Not associated with their actual development?
Right. Though they'll still be doing something that is good for the community, advancing our community goals, but not necessarily on their site. Is that possible?
I'm gonna jump in.
Yeah.
Uh, jumping real quick with that. For the off-site, we could not do that due to, that's already part of the calculation for the Parks and Recreation Impact fee for the commercial or for the residential options. So we would be taking fees from both the residential option and the commercial for the exact same thing, essentially kind of double-dipping the development industry.
Okay.
So, and, and to, to preface that, I know that there was a conversation at the last meeting of maybe jump putting it down to a thirty point and as a base point classification instead of forty point. I would, my only concern with that is I, I've gone through these numbers a lot and tried to figure out where they could fit stuff in, and I'm just kind of curious, even if you look at, look at this site and some of the utility allocation policy categories, where they would achieve that extra ten points? Cause there's a lot of stuff that is, you know, if I can touch on a few things, you know, we have clubhouses or things. That's not something that a, a single-use retail can do. Pool amenities, outdoor decks, active recreation spaces.
Why are those even available in a commercial setting to begin with? I guess, you know, like, I feel like that shouldn't even, if you're going to be opening up a seven-eleven, you're not going to be putting in a pool.
Yeah.
That doesn't make any sense, and it, I feel like that shouldn't even be under.
Well, it's not something that a single-use retail would use, and it's not something they would likely be able to even achieve if they wanted to. But a lot of the mixed-use products and things like that might be able to do that where they have a commercial outline. But so it's something that we want to allow the opportunity for anything. You even look at office spaces and things like that, might be interested in adding tennis courts just because that's something that their workers might want to use on their break or lunch or something along those lines. So we don't want to restrict those things completely from every use. But I can understand your concern over having it as something that would, you know, a, a commercial property could take from and use points for. But it would make it a lot more difficult to set up this policy by saying, based off of this point classification, then you can only get from this bucket and this bucket and this bucket, but not this bucket. No.
So what is preventing us from having these retail, single-use retail projects from coming before us to say we'd like to have an exception?
They have that opportunity.
We can come, they can come before us, explain their project, and we can either give them the, the point exemption or, or not. I mean, honestly, like, we need to make sure that the utility allocation is used for the purpose in which it was designed, and that is to make sure that we get the kind of development that we want and that the kind of community advancement in amenities that we want.
The, the difficulty with that is it creates a legislative process on something that is a by-right development. And so you have a business that's able to go in based off of the permitted uses of the zoning district that that site is located in. And then it would, you know, they, a lot of times they like those easy processes. They don't have to go before the board. They don't have to do public hearings. They don't have to go through all that additional stuff in order to get approval for a site. Adding that legislative is a, is a question mark for a lot of those developers who aren't sure if they want to invest a lot of money in an engineer and designing a site and figuring everything else out, and then being told they can't do it. And so by right, it gives them the opportunity to figure that stuff out behind, you know, before they invest into the community. When we have an easy-to-read and understand utility allocation policy, it means that they have the opportunity to whether or not that site or our community is right for them before they invest a lot of money.
The other thing I'm gonna add to what Adam said was, as you recall, during the economic development discussion that we had in Apex, I believe it was the, it was either the Economic Development Specialists from Apex or Holly Springs, or it might have been Michael Haley from Wake County. But one of them indicated that businesses, when they're doing site selection, they're looking for a reason to say no. This is one additional reason for them to say no. And yeah, we're Zebulon, but we actually had that exact conversation with a potential employer last week, where he wanted to be certain that his use and activity and proposal was consistent with our regulations in place. Because he said, that's a deal-breaker. If I have to start going before public hearings and everything else, I'll go to one of the other communities. That's not uncharacteristic, and a lot of those businesses follow through on that.
So to talk about some other changes, cause that, one of the other things that got brought up was the point change for single-family homes. Dealing with that, it went from a thirty point to a sixty point, which automatically triggered its acceptance into, for utility allocation. If you look at your eleven-by-seventeen maps and go to, I think it's gonna be page like six or something like that, it's a actual minor subdivision page, so it looks like that. So that is a, a site that is on.
Could you hang on?
Yeah.
For a moment, please.
Uh, it looks like second to last page.
Thank you.
Yeah. So that is a site that is on Horton Street, that it is an existing lot that is about a hundred and forty feet across, a hundred and some feet across, that they're looking to subdivide and basically infill. That lot right there at the current utility allocation policy would be awarded thirty points and then have to achieve the additional thirty points on a single-family lot on their own. No, they're not, you know, it's just a new stick-built, one-story, two-story home going there. And if they did not have sixty points, we would not, you know, award them utilities there.
So help me understand this again?
Yeah.
This is, this is, or is it this whole?
No, it is, it is just.
Just that one lot.
This portion right here, they're looking to add a lot, a property line and just subdivide that single piece of property into two. And at our current utility allocation policy, they would not be allowed to connect to water and sewer.
Okay.
And so that's the example. That's why that point went from thirty to sixty is that infill of lots, even vacant lots that we have throughout downtown, the opportunity for them to build and infill and see new homes coming into these areas would not be possible without this change of the utility policy.
What street is this on again, as you say?
Horton.
And so this would be anyone that wanted to subdivide their piece of property into three or less?
Yeah, that's correct. And so that's a, it's a, it's multiple things that are actually in that. Three or fewer is one of those things, or an exempt subdivision. Exempt subdivision is a lot that is greater than ten acres. That's something that the state statute says does not require subdivision review because the lot is so large. It's just an exemption that's written into the state statutes. So if somebody was to have thirty acres and they wanted to give ten acres to a relative for them to build a home, that would be an exempt subdivision.
For them to build a home, not for them to build twenty-five homes?
Yeah. Correct. They would still have, if they were looking to take that ten acres and build twenty-five homes, then they would just be treated like a twenty-five lot subdivision, and they would have their own classification, which that is the threshold for, for the maximum of, I guess, a major subdivision between four and twenty-five lots as proposed.
And what's, so three or fewer lots is considered a minor subdivision? Is that what? Okay.
So that sixty-point base is for existing lots, minor subdivisions, exempt subdivisions, and expedited subdivisions per the state statutes.
Underneath the next one that says change of use,
Yeah.
it's talking about buildings that predate this policy. Would they be grandfathered in anyway?
So the buildings themselves might be grandfathered in, but.
Is it the change of use?
Well, the change of use except where there's an increase in utility demand. So that category was in there, and so I just wanted to kind of clarify it, make sure it was understood that a change of use to a existing building would not trigger, you know, we, we would still permit it as long as it didn't increase the water demand or require a bigger tap or something along those lines.
So as long as there's no increase in demand?
Yeah.
And how would we gauge that?
That would be by enlarging the tap or something along those lines, where, you know, one type of use might require a half-inch to a one-inch tap. Larger offices.
Off the main.
Yeah.
There's also a structure analysis that's done by City of Raleigh in terms of the water capacity used by different uses. As an example, a single for, a, a single-family residential uses approximately a hundred and fifteen gallons average day, or per day. That's down from two hundred and fifty some years ago with the, the new environmental sense of areas. If you have a warehouse, as an example, that's been used for storage for years, and suddenly they're going to turn it into a brewery, the structure of the building, the exterior might not change that much, and they may or have a large enough tap, but going from a warehousing use, which is a very low water capacity, to a brewery, which is a very, very high water capacity, that would be something that would trigger a change.
Even though they don't have to change the diameter at the main?
It, potentially, they may not, depending upon what was constructed. Sometimes warehouse buildings are constructed with a worst-case scenario, so they're not limiting themselves in the future. But it's all based on the use and activities that's there as opposed to the structure.
Okay, so where is that written out or codified or whatever so that someone would know that, okay, this is gonna be a, a significant increase of demand because I'm going from a warehouse to a brewery?
Chapter two of our unified development ordinance requires a zoning compliance permit to be obtained for any time that there is a new use or activity coming into that. And at that point, we would indicate, yes, this is a significant change because not only are they gonna need to do potential utility allocation points, but there's likely to also be building code ramifications as well.
Okay.
Is it spelled chapter two, is that what? Correct. It's the. Correct, it's the process chapter of our Unified Development Ordinance that outlines each of the different processes for development.
And can you help me understand the next one down? Business Office Finance Insurance Professional Services Center. What is the actual base points here? There's, is it just the line through the zero? And it's 45?
Yeah, I could have, I could have written that a little bit better. It was, it went from 50, sorry, a 40-point classification to 45, so it's just adding five points.
And why did you, why did you determine that that was necessary for those types of buildings?
That was one that, when I was going through some of the other uses, it, it seemed, I did a couple kind of brief ones. We didn't have a current project, but I was able to kind of just mull through a few different projects, and ideas, and different point classifications that they could add up. So I didn't have a specific example for that, but based off of a quick run-through of the policy, it seemed like there was a need for an additional five points there, where they might, might not be able to achieve the 60-point.
I'm also going to add in, when I was reviewing this after the work, I spoke with our economic development specialist about some of the uses and activities, and this is one of those that we want to further incentivize to come into town.
A quick question, I'm looking at the revised allocation point system, and under category 2, the EV charging stations, two-port, you show you changed it from three to five points?
Correct.
Wait, where, where are you looking, Larry?
I'm on the handout.
It's in the bonus point section of that hand, that, actually, you may not have the utility allocation policy. It was sent, okay.
Okay, so it's different, it's different than what it is here?
No, that's, that's just a short handout that I used, so we didn't have to flip through 12 pages.
Because it says three points here.
Three points on the other sheet, five-
And there's five points in the other one, so which is it, three or five?
It is five.
It is five.
Stuff that I prepared previously, so apologies about that.
Okay, so, on this handout, it should read five?
Correct.
Okay.
That handout was a working document while we were going through the process of modifying these.
It's fine, I just want to make sure that I understand and that the numbers match.
Yep. So that was me kind of going through a few of the big ones that I've, of the comments that were heard. Is there any additional questions of, you know, specifics of why something may have changed, or, or opinions, or, or concerns that I might be able to address?
Yeah, um, under mixed-use development, transit-oriented, not only have you increased the base points, explain to me, taking it from one quarter-mile up to one-half a mile? I know it's not in red, it's in blue, but that, that is also a change, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That is changing.
Or that change, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it here. Oh, there we go. Okay, transit-oriented developments, as we grow, we want to really find ways to incentivize opportunities for folks not to use vehicles. Transit-oriented developments typically occur around either light rail stations, or in our case, rapid, or the express rail bus stops. And it looks like we're going to be getting a second one in the foreseeable future. Having said that, this is a great avenue for redevelopment of existing areas for transit-oriented development, because it helps to alleviate some of the traffic congestion that we have, so it's not only to incentivize it in that capacity. The reality is, the walking radius for a lot of people does expend, extend past that quarter-mile. When you really think about how far an individual walks, as an example, when you park a vehicle at a mall, it's a quarter-mile just to get to the front door, and then you're walking to the particular store inside. It's all about the environment that one walks in, and that's where a lot of the regulations under Unified Development Ordinance really help to supplement that, to make it an enjoyable experience to walk. So to extend that radius to a half-mile is, is actually in keeping with a lot of similar growing municipalities, especially in warmer climates.
When we talk about mixed-use developments, both urban infill and greenfield, which I'm not familiar with, why did you take out the vertical portion of the mixed retail? I'm assuming that that means that it's going to be one use on one level and another use on subsequent levels, but you took that out?
Yeah, vertical mixed use is that, you know, single-building structure, where it might have retail, bottom apartments above that. You notice a lot of developments that come in as planned unit developments are horizontal mixed use, where they might have apartments associated with stores, where a national chain might not want to be leasing out a space, they want to own their own piece of property, and things along those lines. So that, it was to recognize that the type of development that we see, as we're still very transit-oriented, we're not seeing downtown vertical mixed use only. It's not saying it's, we can't, we don't want it, but it's allowing the opportunity for horizontal mixed use that is more likely to occur in, in our area.
But we would like to see vertical mixed use, but this is giving, you know, they have to come up with less points, and they can also be horizontal, and so that is not necessarily pertaining the type of use that we want.
And, and that type of use, vertical mixed use, is not perfect everywhere, and that's the problem. It works in a downtown situation, it does not work in a more, you know, outskirts of town where people are more likely to, to drive in. So it's, you know, we may want to update our future land use plan to encourage that more, and encourage vertical mixed use in certain areas. I just didn't want to hinder projects who might want to come in and have horizontal mixed use from achieving the utility policy.
Do we have any type of definition for elderly? When we talk about elderly establishments? Is that routinely 55 and above, or?
That's correct, there is industry standards for those classifications, and in those circumstances, they would have to be actually reach-targeted as just opposed to promoted for that.
Mike, can you go back to that, where the quarter and a half mile? Can you break, break that down kind of a little bit more for me? How that would kind of affect us here in, in the municipality here in Zebulon? How would that, give me a scenario, something like that? Would it be beneficial, or whatever?
Yeah, as an example, a good scenario is, our existing bus stop is located off of Ganon, over by the former Compare Foods site. If somebody were to come in to do a redevelopment, that radius going, and it's a, it would be a true transit-oriented development, that would encompass all of the existing Wedgewood Shopping Center, as well as all the way to some of the fast-food restaurants and the Dollar General. So it really would help encourage the redevelopment of that corridor as a transit-oriented development.
Now, take me to the other side of town, right where I'm passing over the tracks to, to Barbara Street and coming back, how would that affect that area? Give me a scenario there, if you could, please.
There's not an existing bus stop located there?
It's a trail, look, correct?
It's transit, there would have to be some sort of a transit stop dedicated for, to be classified as a TOD. One of the possible examples is Go Triangle is looking to provide a secondary bus stop, and right now, based on demand, they're looking at an area over by the Walmart Shopping Plaza. So a lot of the areas within a half-mile walking radius of that could be eligible for this as well. And as we continue to grow and our density increases, we'll likely be able to see additional transit options in the future.
Can you elaborate the pocket neighborhood, explain that, what it consists of, Mike?
Yeah, so the pocket neighborhood is actually, the pocket neighborhood is actually a, a type of neighborhood that our ordinance has, that, I think you've got some photos that kind of show it. Can you go back a couple slides? It's that type of neighborhood, that's a bungalow core, but it's the same idea. It's these smaller neighborhoods that have a shared access, or, or shared areas where they have smaller lots, where they do a shared yard, but it's not your, you know, 75, 100, 200-lot subdivisions. It's somebody going in on five acres and splitting it out for six or seven homes with shared park areas. So, a, a lot of opportunity for infill, especially in our downtown area.
So that would be different than the development that's going on in North Arrendale? With the 12 units?
Are you referring to the townhome development that's just down the street?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's different, because?
Yeah, that is a townhome development, that's not a pocket neighborhood.
All right.
Yeah, there's specific uses and specific standards that you have to follow for a pocket neighborhood. I just do not know them off the top of my head, I apologize.
Where can I find that, I just want to get a little bit better?
If you look at our, what article is that, 5? It should have the development standards for a pocket neighborhood.
Yeah, I say it's either 4 or 6, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Because I searched, but I couldn't find, I was trying to get it, I kind of looked for it.
We can get you that particular reference.
In that section.
Yeah.
How come you pulled out from Section 2B stormwater control measures, and just left it parking? Because, is, is that because you then created 2C?
Correct.
Okay.
It was, it was breaking those sections up, rather than being a clump of parking and stormwater control measures, to just have stormwater control measures.
And is that because they have different max points?
Correct, so they could achieve max points in either category.
All right, so, what are the max points then for 2B? I mean, I'm sorry, but the, the way that this was done, I would ask in the future, don't do it that way, just strike out the whole thing and put the new thing in?
Yeah, now that is a max point of 15.
And it was a max point of 10?
Yep.
All right.
And while we're discussing Section 2C, one of the questions that came up last time was the removal, removal of the, the fountain in the stormwater control measure. That was actually relocated from a different section into Section 2C. It's, it's still there, it's just in a different section of the policy.
Okay, and so, altogether, when someone comes in, they have to get X number of points, and then each of these is just telling you the max that they can get from each-
For each category.
For each category.
So if you take an example, if somebody was to do, rather than just a standard BNP Pond, which does not have any point categories, if they were going to do something with a fountain, or do something with a, as a buyer retention as a portion of it, or all of it, buyer retention is mostly underground, it, you know, it swells up during the storms, and then it dips down, and, you know, see it, but they could get additional points from each of those categories, and then if they were going to go from the next one to, say, if it's a residential, you know, if they comply with the residential design guidelines, they're getting their 10 points there. So it's really walking through the list of what they can provide, and, and adding that up.
So, go to Section 2E, the infill and redevelopment.
Yeah.
So just redeveloping something gives you 10 points?
Well, that is redevelopment inside the DTC zoning district. Or are you referring to the vacant space that is the, you know, the square footage requirement?
No, I just, this was all new, with, with 10 points.
Mm-hmm. That 10 points was to, is in the development or redevelopment within the downtown core.
And so then you'll get 6 points if it's in the downtown periphery?
Correct.
All right.
So it encourages going downtown, and also makes up for the fact that in the downtown core, you're working with a lot less land in most situations, where you might not be able to provide as many amenities.
And can you explain why you took the verbiage out of category 4, so that it no longer says "only for projects with residential components"? So this just means that anyone can gather points for things that might not even be applicable to what they're doing?
That came as a result of looking at, you know, large-scale office or, or employment opportunities, where they might want to have some kind of amenity that is for the people that work there, whether that be, you know, some type of a pool, if they felt like doing that, or even a additional greenway, or active recreation spaces, like I was talking about, a tennis court, or pickleball court, or something like that, that is for the office, you know, similar to those types of amenities within a major subdivision.
Larry, were your questions answered? Because I feel like you had questions, especially with the point distribution, and I have definitely dominated the Q and A portion of this.
I've pretty much covered all the ones I had from the first handout. And once again, reminder, this is a living document that I didn't think we'd be changing this quick, but you encounter things as you grow, and you kind of have to kind of change, so.
Yeah, and, and to touch on that, as Mike talked about, we've got multiple developers that have been in conversation with us that are concerned and paying attention to these meetings, on what happens with this policy. The, the convenience store and the cookout that I was referencing, there's the 24/7 Fitness Club is looking to relocate and build his new facility. He could not achieve it as it currently stands, and then even the, what is it? The Zebulon Animal Hospital is looking to relocate, and he is paying close attention to how this policy lays out, whether he can stay within Zebulon.
And we still have the catch 22 here, board determination, all the other uses not categorized, so something weird comes, it pops back in here.
Exactly, if I can't sit there and pin it to an exact base point, it would be coming to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with the tweaks, there'll be more tweaks.
Yeah, but I think that in, for me, in some of these cases, we're, we're assigning, we're telling them that they have too many base points, like, I want people to stretch to be here, this is an awesome community, and it's up to us to kind of like control what kind of development happens. And I get where the planning department is coming from, and I appreciate them as the catchers of all of the feedback, what they have to disseminate to us. But, you know, like, I don't want any old business coming here, just- But you know, like, I don't want any old business coming here just because, you know, like just because somebody calls you and they're like, I can't possibly do that. I don't want you to be like, well, hang on, I'll go in front of the board and we'll change that so that you can come here. Like, that is not how I want to play this at all.
Kind of sounds like what we're doing a little bit, saying we're changing.
It does.
This is our only control mechanism of how we develop. This is the only tool we have. You, to hear you, I know you're fact-based and number-based, to be changing so soon. I hear you say you're comfortable with it cause the change comes with growth, whatever it may be. But we kind of like change, each time we're going to change just to kind of cater to a certain group of people. The next time, when will be the next change that we need to do to get that certain?
Well, if we see this as somehow being misused or we're getting something we really didn't want, that's the time to revisit this.
So we revisit it after we already get the one thing that we don't want?
Right.
And then we say, well, we don't want any more of those. Like, that's, that's tricky because then we still have the thing that we don't want.
Yeah, then we're stuck with it.
Out of, out of curiosity, if we could, since you guys have the full utility allocation policy, we have a site plan for the cookout. Do you guys mind just walking through kind of quickly and seeing what you believe that they could achieve on that site? Maybe that might help guide us in what changes we might make or reduce the changes that I propose.
So right now, the state cookout cannot meet the sixty points, it cannot meet that.
Correct. What they're, yeah, what they've explained to me is, and I've made liberties in saying that they would do EV charging stations and do some public art and things like that. But that is the, the, the current policy, they could not meet. What we are proposing allows some opportunities for small things, small additions to their site, uh, that would improve what you're seeing driving down the road, uh, and while you're at that store, and still gives them the opportunity to come to town. But I, I'd, I'd love the opportunity to walk through based off of, this is an example, and come up with what you guys feel the points would be.
You guys comfortable with that? You guys comfortable with that? Walk me through it. I'm fine with that.
Okay. And we can kind of use it as, um, we can look at before any changes. Obviously, we have the changes that are on the, that are proposed, but if we look at, um, single-use retail, let me pull that section up.
So it's on the back of the first page?
So that was previously twenty points. So we'll start with a base classification of twenty points. I'll be trying to keep note and as we're going through what we could actually add. So we just select one base point and then you're going to the bonus point section and we can start working through category one, um, how they could achieve that, um, achieve that, uh, sixty point number. Looking at the abatement of non-conformities, that site has nothing on it. They are not non-conforming in any shape or form, so they would not be able to get any points in that category. Roadway infrastructure not warranted by a TIA, UDO, or the CTP. Any roadway construction that they were doing along Dogwood and Arendal is required by the CTP. Any additional road, uh, construction they would be doing would be required by TIA, so they would not get any points in that category as well. If you're looking at off-site, uh, public greenway improvements, there's not, uh, a greenway on that side of the road. They'd have to do something on the other side, uh, where there is additional proposed development and, uh, most likely any developer who's seeing that would not want to build something on somebody else's site, uh, especially somebody else, some, another commercial site. So that's possible, but it is a lot of linear feat for them to get two points. So do you guys, uh, so my recommendation would be not awarding any points in that likely just because there's not an opportunity for them to do it on a small retail site. The off-site bike-ped improvements, that's something that was added in.
Excuse me, Adam. One thing, uh, Mike and I were just talking, one thing we could look into is, um, and we don't know the legality of this. So one thing, while they are required to pay a transportation impact fee, maybe they pay above and beyond a transportation impact fee. So they're, they're, they're confined on what they can do at the site, but they're chipping in more elsewhere. That, give us a chance to look into that. That might be an option to throw in there, but again, we haven't discussed this with the attorney. We just popped in our head.
Thank you.
You look at one D, there's no max, so what is that?
That is, just because it's its own section, they, you could either get, I guess the max would be three points. Cause you're doing one or the other.
Alright.
Or both, I guess, in three to five. As it is.
So would the max be?
Sidewalk or bike lane.
Five?
Five, actually. Yeah, that could be both.
Alright.
So, looking from that, um, unless otherwise, I did not award any points in category one to this site, if, is that correct?
Unless they did the pet improvements?
Unless they were to do some off-site bike-ped improvements, which, um, is, is certainly possible to the extent of that would be based on TRC approval.
Mm-hmm.
And that area has a lot of pedestrian excessive, uh, pedestrian stuff already and a lot of sidewalks. We're discouraging, uh, bicycle, uh, bike lanes and things like that along, uh, Arendal just because of safety for bicyclists. But they could certainly do something along Jones Street or something like that, so we could, we could say a three point, uh, for a bike lane improvement, uh, further up Jones or, or something along those lines. This is kind of a unique site where it's, it's bounded by, uh, a main corridor that doesn't have that type of improvement or doesn't, we don't encourage that type of improvement.
Okay.
So they are, if we're moving to category two, we're still sitting at a base point of twenty. The, uh, conservation of natural habitat meeting, uh, active open space requirements, they don't have any space to do that. That is something that is primarily for.
I'm sorry, where are you at now?
Category two.
And that they don't do anything in category two?
I'm, I'm moving to, to A, uh, to talk about.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So, the active open space requirements are something that are, you see in a lot of our major subdivisions, not something that are, uh, seen on single-use sites. So, you know, where you have, uh, walking trails around ponds or, or tennis courts and things like that, those are things that would classify towards that, so they would not get any points there. Regarding parking, um, structured parking facilities, if they've got the property for it, but they don't have really the need for a structured parking on this site, and that's a huge investment for any single-use retail, it's something that maybe a, a, a large-scale operation, large-scale office might be able to achieve, but not a cookout going on a single spot. So they would not get ten points there. EV charging stations, that's something I included, so there's five points that they could be able to get. That would be something simple that would encourage, uh, and that we would encourage and have on site, so.
So according to this right there, they could put in six ports and get fifteen points?
Correct.
Okay. So there's fifteen.
If you'd like to add it, so they'd be fifteen points and have the six points, but we can do that.
Another quick comment on EV charging stations, as of the Triangle J Council of Government meeting a year or so ago, they told us when you put an EV station in, it should be four ports. And here's the logic, when they first came out with EV cars, the engineers decided the charging point should be where the gas tank fill used to be. So they just put them on the side of the car, which meant only one car could be charged at a time, so the ports were one. Then somebody came up with a great idea, we should double it as long as you're running underground electricity to two ports. But the trend now is all charging points will be either on the front or the back of the vehicle. So if you put one location up, you should be able to charge four different directions. Little unusual how you're going to do the parking.
Yeah.
But four cars should be able to back into or drive into a charging station, cause you've already got the expense of running the power and putting the pedestal there that you should take it to four rather than two.
Uh, it's also important to keep in mind the, the cost associated with these. A level-three charging station, which is something that would be typical of short-duration stays, um, such as, uh.
A quick charge.
Quick charge. Um, those run anywhere from forty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for two-port units. So, in this situation, five points would be forty thousand dollars for the two-port unit, not including the installation cost and running the wiring, going back to cost effectiveness.
Yeah. And the other thing is, there are federal grants for EV stations and you have to have two qualifications, which we have both. You have to be a city that's near an interstate and you have to be lower economic conditions and you automatically qualify. And I don't know if we've looked at, in applying for any of those, but just food for thought in the future.
Mm-hmm, gotcha.
So based off of the discussion we have, would we still be saying that they'd be doing a total of six ports or are we looking at a single two-port, uh, station?
Oh, two-port, that's fine.
Alright. Next one, dealing with provision for on-street public parking, uh, one point per stall with a, up to ten max. Uh, we obviously would not be encouraging, uh, additional parking on Arendal, we would not approve that in any way, shape, or form. Dogwood is a short road that has a lot of traffic. We would not be wanting to put on-street parking there. Uh, Jones Street is going to become a, you know, a location for a lot of traffic that's trying to avoid getting onto Arendal. I don't believe we would be encouraging parking there as well. Uh, just reduce the risk of traffic accidents on heavily-traveled roads. So I would not recommend putting additional points there, if you would agree. So then jumping to, um, and just kind of keeping track of everything, so we're looking at a base point of twenty and five points for the EV, so we've got twenty-five points right now. Stormwater, uh, that's a maximum of ten points if we're looking at restoration of riparian buffer. There's no riparian buffer on that site. Construction of a fountain on the pond, so they do have a pond that they're going to have to do. That would be a, a pretty simple four points that would, you know, keep water moving, keep bugs and mosquitoes from, from wanting to grow in that pond, and that would be a helpful and easy thing to do, to get four points. Bio-retention's another possibility, uh, but that is a larger expense, uh, and for the developer, uh, to go to five points. So kind of looking at their cost, they'd most likely just go with a fountain and a BMP pond, uh, so that we could say four points, but we can say best-case scenario, give them five points to do bio-retention, uh, or one of the other underground capture or something along those lines, if you guys would agree to that. Yep? Okay. So, an additional five points there, uh, for that. Building and site design, um, let's see, uh, non-residential building design that incorporates active upper story, that would go against what we're looking at for a single use. That would be something that was mixed use and so we would, um, actually, that's active upper story. So if they did a two-story cookout, uh, but that, of course, does create a huge expense for, for them. We've got design, uh, standards that have, um, dealing with these types of uses that require them to have things that kind of look or appear to be two stories to maintain their urban look, but adding that extra level is a huge expense from building and design standpoint. So I would not think that they would be going to that, um, unless they were in some kind of very urban downtown, which is not cookouts model. So, uh, pedestrian-oriented and walkable site design, uh, them looking to get people driving in and picking up food and leaving, they would not be meeting that category with, you know, parking and everything like that, so would not get points there. This is not in, moving to section two E, this is not in the DTC or the DTP, so they would not get any points there. This is a vacant lot, not a vacant building, so they would not achieve any points for redevelopment of, of that area.
One second, before we, can we go back to two D, the pedestrian-oriented? I know most cookouts have where you can walk up, enter, and order that, so that's not considered that. I know everyone I go to, you can walk up and order.
You can, that, but that would not be pedestrian-oriented. Their, their, you know, the primary use of the site is people driving up through the drive-through or parking and walking up, uh, or even some of the inside spaces, but it wouldn't be the primary use, uh, of the site. And it may be something that they could design and, you know, shift it to where all the parking is tucked in the rear or something like that, so it's encouraging people to ride their bike, walk up to the front. But as the design shows right now, where traffic patterns move all the way around, it wouldn't be pedestrian-oriented.
Thank you.
So jumping back down to two F, this is not a historic, uh, structure, so they would not get any points there. Lead certification, that section, um, you know, they certainly could, uh, apply for lead certification. Uh, if we want to give them best-case scenario, they might be able to get the lead certified, uh, certification, which is the lowest end, which is very minimal on the cost from them, so we could say two points there. That would be a pretty simple one to do. As we jump to outdoor enhancement and, uh, transit improvements, category three, um, dealing with, uh, construction of Parkway Street section or Collector Street, uh, Level Street, that's something that is, um, specifically referencing new, that are not part of our CTP or part of a, um, uh, already-required road improvements, so that would not be applicable for them. Let's see, construction or preservation of gateway landscaping or structure, they don't have anything for that. Then, let's see, the rest, yeah, restoration of historical structure, that's something that looks like I did not take off of there and when I moved it, um, so maybe I crossed that out. Outdoor, outdoor display of public art, um, that's something that they could achieve. That would be a pretty simple one for them to do. Would we want to give them those potential four points?
Yeah.
Alright. Public-facing outdoor mural, that's another opportunity for them to get four points. Uh, if they painted and did that, would you want to encourage that on the side as well?
Yep.
So, let's see, uh, so Rose, Gateway Plant Bed, um, with a maintenance agreement, that's not something that we have in this area. Pollinator garden would be another opportunity. That's a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot, uh, option. That's something that they could do around the BMP in association with, uh, their existing landscaping, um, as long as it is called out and protected on our plan and in the future. That would be an easy one to get some additional points there as well.
Okay.
So I said three.
So, um, zero-scape techniques and drought-tolerant species, that is a, uh, it's something that can be done, it's something that, uh, but it is, it's not the type of landscaping that you see a lot or done a lot. It's the, the type of stuff that doesn't require watering. Obviously, a lot of these places have, uh, preferred landscape stuff. We have our landscape standards that are for, uh, uh, foundation landscaping, things along those lines. But that's something that we could do. It's, it's not a huge expense, but it is an additional expense to their landscaping and it would have to be approved by the, uh, the TRC, um, or at least by staff, making sure that it met our minimum qualifications. Would we want to do that? If you guys are familiar with zero-scape, I know I kind of touched over it, but.
I mean, if we're, if we're talking about things that, yeah, I mean, if they can do it to reach the number, then yeah, put it on there.
Okay, well, that also maxes out that point category.
Okay, so.
Of maximum of twelve.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be able to obtain both, or was it three points, uh, two, three points? They would only get one of those points and nothing else, including the native species of trees would count towards that classification.
Yeah, so they wouldn't be able to get any additional with.
So they get twelve points?
Twelve points.
Okay.
So we max that category.
Okay. And that's, cause you've reduced it from twenty points to twelve?
No, that was, uh, taking it from ten points to twelve points.
Again, like this is confusing to me.
So.
Points there.
Alright, and then dealing with section three B, this is more for expensive-oriented development. Obviously, they would not get any points there, um, so we can move to amenities. That is dealing with greenways that we talked about, and that's, you know, minimum one point for a thousand-foot of, of private greenway. That site's not big enough for them to have their own private greenway. So we would move past that, they would not get any points. Uh, obviously, they're not going to do a pool, um, that would be something. Obviously, they're not going to do a pool, that would be something unattainable on that site, so they would not get points at that category as well. The outdoor deck and patio is something that was to be associated with pools or something, some type of amenity like that, so they would not get that category as well.
All right, but hang on a second. It doesn't say that it is connected to pools. And so if they were to just create an outdoor patio for seating so that people could eat outside, they could capture those points then, right?
They could. If, if our interpretation previously was that deck or patio was associated with the pool, even though it was not tied together before, if that's something that you guys would want to encourage outdoor seating, outdoor decks and everything like that, I'd be happy to interpret it that way.
I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just trying to understand how this could be seen as it's written.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
So is that something you guys would like to see, is that, you know, if they've got a thousand square foot, they get a point there?
Sure.
Okay.
I think that it's perfectly acceptable to think that in the next section, that they would probably have a jacuzzi, so let's put two points for the cookout jacuzzi, please.
Okay. Steam room as well.
People love to eat burgers in a bathtub, I've heard this, I read it somewhere, so maybe two points. Well, not for right now, let's...
Clubhouse, obviously, they're not going to be able to achieve that, they're not looking to do that. Additional active recreation, section 4F, you know, some things like a Sonic like to have volleyball courts, but cookout, they don't have the, the site space for it on this, so we could not see them adding fields or something along those lines, so we wouldn't get any points in that category also. Urban open space enhancements, that's something that we added in a lot of those categories. This is something that we realized for a lot of the downtown developments, where they might have a courtyard or something like that, they, those would get some additional points there by adding the game tables, things along those lines, but that's kind of a select group of different things. Do you guys have specific ones that you think that cookout would add?
If they have a thousand-foot patio, they could potentially put some kind of shade cover over it and get a point, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so they could get an additional point there for a shade covering. Any others that you think they would be easy to do? I added the artist-designed bike racks, because that's something we already require bike parking. An addition of that is a pretty simple thing, so additional one point there. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. And obviously, they're not going to do affordable housing, and they could, as far as category six or other category, they would not likely be using the safety operation systems, they certainly could, but I'm not as familiar with those, I just know that some subdivisions use them, and the police generally encourage the use of them. But the additional smart waste and recycling station, those are the solar-powered waste stations that compress and compact the trash, so they don't have to change the trash as frequently, it keeps everything tight and inside, and, you know, you don't see as much trash spilling out of those containers, so that would be an easy two points for them to get there. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Forty-nine points. So that's what the base points of 20 points, they would be able to achieve 49 points and would not get the utility allocation policy, not meet the standards of the utility allocation policy. So that's a prime example of, we push and encourage a lot of stuff that they would do above and beyond their development, and so be able to achieve the point classification as it stands right now, with some additional points that weren't on our current allocation policy.
So with that said, was this known to those guys when they purchased this property and kind of things like that? Was this kind, I mean, I think I heard you guys say that sometime before a developer comes in, they buy our property, sit down and talk to you guys and take a look at it. Did Cookout go through that process prior to that?
Cookout has actually purchased multiple properties within the town for various reasons. I don't recall specifically when they purchased this particular lot, but I believe they purchased it before the utility allocation policy was in effect.
Well, because they hadn't started development, you know, if they had started development prior to that, they wouldn't be held to this policy, but utility allocation policy was in effect.
Right.
Then they submitted, now they have to follow that.
Ultimately, the other element to take in consideration is if it's not Cookout, what other potential use is it going to be, especially given the cost of the infrastructure? Ultimately, we are looking for, moving forward with approval of the utility allocation policy as drafted tonight. If there's additional questions, we're, we're more than happy to answer those, but we do have several developments, as Adam alluded to, that are awaiting some sort of action on this.
So there's two different types of major subdivisions.
Correct.
Oh, sorry, I almost forgot to add, I wrote down in note, something that was discussed earlier about uses that you may not want in the town. The utility allocation policy is not the tool to use to regulate those. The unified development ordinance is the tool. Ultimately, you can't prohibit uses within municipalities, there, there are state laws that prohibit municipalities from doing that. You can put particular standards to really limit potential locations. We've done that with vape shops, with pawn shops, with, yeah, games of skill, thank you. We've already created certain parameters around those selected uses. If there's other uses, we can work with you at a future meeting to discuss what additional standards need to be included in our UDO, but the utility allocation policy, that's not the tool to discourage uses.
Well, it is a tool, too, that we have, the type of things that can come in town, or it is one, and it may not be the sole tool, but it is one of the tools in the trade that we can utilize, correct?
It's a tool to incentivize, not to restrict.
Yeah. What you're beginning, talking about the subdivisions, why there's a separation, I'm assuming is where that was going. When you look at large subdivisions, two, 300-lot subdivisions, they have a lot more ability of land, HOA fees, things along those lines where they can do a clubhouse, they can do a pool site. When you look at infill developments or small subdivisions that are looking at 12, 14, 15, something, you know, townhomes or small homes or pocket neighborhood, things like that, they don't have the HOA capacity and fees to maintain and upkeep a pool, so they have to find other ways to achieve that. That was, you know, why that, that point separation was there. They still have a lot of opportunities to add amenities that can still be used, but aren't something that is going to require constant upkeep or staff.
So staff recommends approval of the policy amendments. If the board is comfortable, then they can make a motion and pass that. If they're not, then staff needs some direction, and if the consensus of the board is that you're not ready to approve this, then I've got some things that we can use to maybe generate some ideas about the direction. But first things first, if you all are in approval of the policy, then approve it, and we'll treat it as a live document and modify it. If you're not, then we need some direction.
Is there a motion for approval?
I hereby move to approve the amendments to utility allocation policy as presented at the May 9, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting.
We have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Discussion?
Well, if we're going to go through and approve this, then I'd like to make sure that the verbiage says "as amended," because we have, like, a couple of things where they need to add the base points, and there's an area where they need to strike out verbiage because it was placed somewhere else in section 3A.
Correct.
The restoration, so I would highly encourage you guys to use the verbiage "as amended."
I revise my motion to include "presented as amended."
Can I second that?
We need a second. Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Discussion on the amended version?
Just not on the amended version, but how, the next time, when we're going to change, potentially change, I know you stated as things change.
Yeah.
Is there a guideline that we can utilize? I mean, I know we're growing, as Commissioner Low stated, is there something that how often this thing has changed, whatever, I know it's a living document, I hear that quite often, so I want to kind of get a baseline for me to get better understanding, and also the citizens watching, how often we will change this.
Yeah. If, if it's something that the, any of you all would like to see changed or have amendments that you'd like to propose, we can bring it for you again and, and present it, that's really any time, we just have to run through the process of getting it to you. But it's up to you guys, if you have something you want to change, or if a potential developer says, "I can't achieve this, there's something I want to change," then we would bring it before you as well.
I'm going to make a recommendation that Mike will kill me on. Let's just, let's just plan that in six months, we'll just, we'll check in with you all and give you, give you a litmus test of how it's working.
Okay. We really appreciate it.
And so going forward, when we, I would like to see, anyone, whether it's a cookout or a 7-Eleven, or this-size subdivision or that-size subdivision, can you just, when you're doing some kind of report for us, tell us how, how many points they've achieved and in what categories they've achieved them?
Absolutely. We can do that, Alan, as, as part of our website having the interactive development map, they're going to be submitting this as part of their packet, we can include their utility allocation policy, what they're proposing, as part of the packet online, and then when me or, or Mike are presenting it to you guys, you know, we can bring that up if you have specific questions about a development.
I think that that would help us understand how it's being utilized.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll vote, Commissioner Baxter?
Approve. In favor?
Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Clark?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Low?
Favor.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That concludes the staff's presentations.
Thank you. Good motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
adjourn.
Does anybody have my five-county stadium book?
I do. I took it to the school today.
Okay.
I showed the kids that, I was at the little school today. I got it. No, I took, I took everything, I had everything.